There we go.
Good evening and welcome to the Jersey City zoning board of adjustment. This is our regularly scheduled meeting for July 28, 2022. It's a little after 6:30 PM. We're coming to you via Zoom in accordance with the. I don't you change that. I don't see it, but anyway, the Byron. Something the Open Publics Meeting Act, which allows us to come present these forums virtually during times of emergency and the state has been doing this for the past two years and a few months. So this is a call to order and we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to.
The United States of America.
Republic.
Nations.
Thanks. Sorry about that. Any sunshine announcements?
In accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act, all this of this hearing has been given to the Jersey Journal, El Espejo Salito and posted with the city clerk on Friday, on Tuesday, July 26, 2020. We have notices to be marked.
And they will be be one in evidence for tonight's hearing.
Thank you very much. Can you take roll call whenever you're ready, please?
Yes. Commissioner Patel.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Silva.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Coyle.
Here.
Commissioner Donnelly.
Here.
And Chairman Jacobs.
Here.
Seven commissioners present.
Thank you. And can we swear in staff, please?
Do you swear? Excuse me. Do you swear the testimony or comments you will give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Great. Thank you. Any correspondence?
Yes, let me share my screen to show you the agenda. One second. Okay. Uh, so there is one item. It's the last item, item number 16, case Z 21 dash 047 for an appeal. The address is 238 Academy Street. They will be adjourning for a meeting to a meeting with an uncertain date. And that's the only item that will be adjourning for this meeting, for this session.
So other than that, the other ones on this agenda are going forward today. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. So then do you want to do the reorganization discussion now or an executive session after we go through the agenda?
I think after.
After.
Do it at the end.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. Any old business?
There's no, actually, sorry, one second. Just share the screen one more time to show. Yeah, so there is old business. Item number 10, case Z 20 dash 077, 163 through 165 Delaware Ave. That's the address. So that is old business. There's also case Z 21, sorry, Z 20 dash 100, item 11. The address is 216 Palisades Ave. Case 12, sorry, item 12, case Z 21 dash 021. The address is 46 Congress. And lastly, item number 13, case Z 21 dash 072. The address is 203 Danforth Ave. Those are the only items that are old business.
Okay. Well, let's, you already talked about the adjournments, which is only the item 16 on here. So let's get started with old business. Case Z 20 dash 077. The address is 163 dash 165 Delaware Avenue.
I don't see. Oh, here we go. Promoting the strumming.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you, Nick?
Good. Doing well. Thank you.
Nick, before we start, Bridget, this is a notice case. We have his affidavit and proof of service and notice of publication. And for this application, Bridget, I guess you can mark this A1.
Okay, so this will be, sorry for my voice. This will be A1 in evidence.
Yes.
For tonight's meeting and it is Nick Chirami, not Steve Joseph. Okay.
Right, right. All right. Thank you very much. If you don't mind, I'll, I'll begin. We'll dive right in. As we said, Nicholas Trammy appearing for the applicant this evening, MBD Group LLC. The property address is 163, 165 Delaware Ave. Which, just to give a bit of orientation, is on the northern side of Delaware Ave between Condit Street and Duncan. It's a fairly large site. The site is approximately 58 and a half by 100 feet in depth, giving us about 5,850 square feet. The applicant this evening proposes to subdivide that site, which was a result in two, I'll use the word oversized lots or two larger lots. Each one being 29, about 29 and a quarter, 29.25 feet by 100 feet in depth. So fairly large parcels on these new proposed lots and given the size of the parcels, the applicant intends to build one three family home on each site. A few characteristics about the project before we jump into our professionals. The bulk of the building is permitted in terms of its size, shape, height. Because the lots are so large, they kind of give us a fairly large building envelope, which our architect will, will go through in further detail. Another component of the project is that we've got a single curb cut, which is designed to increase availability of on-street parking. And that will lead into driveways, one on each site. To accomplish all this, the applicant really only needs the one variance, which is D variance for use. And I think with that, it's a fair overview and we can begin with our professionals. So we've got two professionals this evening. We've got Muki Bajaj and Sam Bellamy.
Mr. Bajaj, would you raise your right hand if he sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? And you're on mute, Muktie.
Yeah, yes, I do.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. This is Muktie Bajaj. And I can go ahead and share the screen. My license is current.
Yeah, Muktie, I was gonna say while you're, while you're putting up your screen and we accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So this is 165, 160, 163, 165 Delaware Avenue. This is in the northern, north side of Delaware between Condit Street and Duncan Avenue. Like Nick mentioned, this is an oversized lot. The lot area, existing lot area is 5,850 square feet. And the block is 16101 and the lot is 36. What the client, what we are proposing here is to subdivide this lot into two equal lots. The lot area of each lot will be 2,925 square feet. And what is being proposed is a three unit building on each lot. The project does comply with all the bulk and yard requirements. The front yard setback being eight feet 10 inches. And the area required is 26 feet 2 inches and we, that complies with that. Lot coverage of 85% is required and 79.38%.
Repeat that, please. Lot coverages.
Lot coverage of 85% is required and the proposed is 79.38%. The building coverage required is 60% and the proposed is 58.87. The total gross area of the building is a little over 5,000 square feet. It's 5,145 square feet. So if you, I'll directly go to A2 sheet. So this one shows the survey of the property on the left. This is the existing two-story, two-unit building with a huge masonry garage in the back of the property. There are two curb cuts on this property. One is like approximately 12 feet and the other one is 14 feet. So the proposed, the existing building will be demolished and this two curb cuts will be reduced to one curb cut. So they will have in parking on both the sides of the driveway. A3 shows the proposed site plan where you can see this oversized lot. The new proposed building, which will be attached in center. The three feet setback, three feet one, which is the required setback on the left and right side of the property. There's one driveway in the center, which will lead to two, two garages. Substantial landscaping, which complies with ordinance and two trees are also proposed in the front. I'm directly going to A, page A8. This one has, shows the first floor plan. There is no cellar proposed in this building. This is the first floor. There are two tandem parking. And the, the area of this parking is 600 square feet. The lobby entrance, so if you look at this building, this is divided in the center. So these are mirror buildings. The lobby entrance is towards the left. And the unit one is one bedroom, one and a half bath and is 920 square feet. The way this whole concept was done, that every unit gets recreational or outdoor space. So unit one will have a patio area in the back. And the first level has a living dining and kitchen with a half bathroom. Also on this level, we'll have a garbage room, which will be inside the garage and a sprinkler room. So the other benefit of this building is that the entire building will have a sprinkler system because of the three unit building. So it's just a three-story structure. Second floor has a unit two. First level of unit two and the second level of unit one, which is the second bedroom. And the unit two is three bedroom, three baths. It's approximately 1,400 square feet. And the unit three is two bedroom, two baths and the area of that unit is 1,290 square feet. Unit two and unit three, they both are duplex units and they both have access to a rooftop deck. One of the rooftop deck is approximately 365 square feet and the other one is 630. Between the two private rooftop decks, there have been shrubs are proposed, which will be like a privacy shrub. And some planter boxes are proposed in the front of the building. This is the proposed facade for the building. Now you use the traditional brick with the awning and six glass windows in the black frame. The recessed entrance will, will be finished with a wood tone siding. The side and the back elevation wall we have proposed is a lighter tone for tucko on the first floor. And line of siding for the upper floor. I think that pretty much covers up all the points I would like to say and conclude my testimony. I'll be more than happy to answer any question.
Thank you, Muktie.
Thank you.
Yeah. Unless the board has any questions, I would bring up Samuel Bellamy right now. He's our planner on the project and he can kind of take us through some of the planning aspects.
I can't see him because the plan is up. Okay, now I did it. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding? The truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, there's a background echo coming in somewhere. I'm actually hearing myself. State and spell your name for the record.
Samuel Bellamy, last name B E L L A M Y.
Thank you.
And my license is current and in good standing.
And Sam, we accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you. So getting right into the variance that we are seeking tonight. We are located in the one and two family housing R1 district in Jersey City. So the proposed, with the proposed subdivision and three-story, three-unit buildings on each lot, we are seeking a D1 use variance for the, for the three unit building. As Mr. Chirami said in his opening, we are currently essentially oversized lot at 5,850 square feet. Subdivision will, will maintain larger lots at 2,925 square feet each where the standard R1 district lot is 2,500 square feet. So with this, with this lot size, it really allowed us to provide a building footprint that can accommodate the three units that we are proposing. Also, as Muktie walked through, we are complying with all the bulk requirements. So we're matching the, the front yard setback on the block, which is approximately nine feet, providing three foot, one inch side yard setbacks on both sides. And also providing for an approximately 28 foot rear yard setback, meeting both the minimum rear yard and combined front and rear yard setback required. We did take a look at the density on the block. This, this property is directly adjacent to a multifamily building to the north. That, that building has six units at 169 Delaware Avenue that equals 70 units per acre. So taking a step back, the, the three units proposed on the 2,925 square foot lot equals about 45 units per acre. So slightly higher than the implied 35 units breaker in our one district, but still consistent with the surrounding area and other multifamily buildings. To the west of the building, along the rear yard, fronting onto Condit Street is also a multifamily building at four units at 87 units breaker. So again, we did find other multifamily buildings in the surrounding area. Being compliant with all the bulk requirements, we are compliant three-story building. So we're really in scale with the surrounding area. And as Muktie walked through the, the floor plans, we are providing for a one bedroom, a two bedroom and a three bedroom unit, all appropriately sized, typically actually a little bit larger than what you see sometimes in, in the multifamily buildings. So I do find this, this lot to be appropriately sized for, for the property and particularly well-suited for this, for the three unit buildings. This, this project will also advance several of the purposes of municipal land use law. It is an appropriate use and development of property, keeping with the residential intent of the, the area in scale with the, the, the neighborhood and also improving the streetscape. We are providing for front yard landscaping, street trees. So I think those are all positive acts that's consistent with purpose A. The provided setbacks will maintain adequate light air and open space between the adjacent structures. Allow for light and air into, into the block. So that's consistent with purpose C. Again, the density is consistent with the surrounding area, consistent with purpose E. Moving into the negative criteria, it's my opinion, there's no substantial detriment to the general welfare. So I, so I went through all the complying aspects as, as far as the bulk standards. We actually are removing several existing non-conformant conditions. So currently the existing building and garage structure and surrounding surface parking area has a hundred percent lot coverage. So we are substantially reducing that to about, about 80%, which is actually under the 85% requirement. So I do find that to be another positive aspect of this project. The existing garage structure along the rear inside of the property is, has an existing non-conforming setbacks, both side yard and rear yard. So by removing that structure, providing for a rear yard area, I think we are meeting the intent of the R1 district, providing for light air into the block and improving the condition there. Muktie also mentioned that we are reducing the number of curb cuts from two to one. So where there was approximately 26 feet total of curb cut, now it's down to 10 feet, centered in a lot to provide access to both garages. And that's also compliant with the, the R1 district requirements. We are adding front yard landscaping and two street trees, both, both, there are no current street trees. So I think with those two aspects, we will be improving the streetscape, improving the visual and the walkability of, of this area. So with that, I don't find any substantial detriment to the general welfare. I also don't find any substantial detriment to the intended purpose of the zone plan. I think by meeting the R1 bulk requirements, albeit with the, with the three unit building, we are consistent with intent and keeping with the scale of the area. So these, these buildings that we are proposing are, are appropriate for, for this residential district. We also advanced several of the purposes of the, of the master plan, continuing efforts to enhance residential neighborhoods. That, that includes keeping a consistent density, minimizing curb cuts, eliminating front yard parking, protecting street trees and preserving on-street parking. So I think this project, as I mentioned, will, will promote many of those aspects and goals of, of the master plan. Again, by providing for a one, two and three bedroom unit in each, each building, I think we are meeting the, the purpose of the, the goal of the master plan to provide for a balance of housing options in Jersey City. So just to summarize, I, I do find that this property is particularly well-suited for the three unit buildings that we are proposing and that we meet both the positive and negative criteria. That, that would conclude my testimony, but I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Thank you. Nick, anything else?
Thank you, Sam. Yeah, just, just two, two quick points here. The, you know, during the course of the project, the applicant has been heavily engaged with staff in the neighborhood. Two items that came out of that, that the applicant is, is very comfortable agreeing to. And they would end up as conditions of the approval. The, the neighborhood was looking for additional, or to have the, the screening on the roof deck be trees and native trees. The applicant is comfortable with that and can work with staff and forestry on the selection of those. Again, on the street level, so those are the roof deck trees and screening. On the street level, the applicant is also agreeing to work with staff and forestry to, you know, to, to choose native trees that'll go in there instead of what may be depicted, which are, I believe, service berry trees. And then again, instead of the Japanese lilacs that we have depicted, we'll work with, with staff and, and Jersey City forestry on native species and plants. So we can, we can feel comfortable adding those to the, to any, any approval as well.
I think.
I have a quick question, but it's actually more of a clarification.
Sure.
And I think any of the witnesses could probably answer this. I'm, I'm confused looking at the, the zoning chart on the front page of the architectural plans. And the, the piece about the, the side yard minimum, how there's one standard for one and one standard for both. And I don't, I, I assume and just let me know that I'm reading everything correctly. On either side of the, this building, there's, there's a, a three foot. There, there's a three foot side yard setback. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I just didn't understand the, the first line where it said one. But that's okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Anyone else have questions? Catherine?
Yes. So am I reading this correctly? There are two parking spaces provided in each of those garages. Is that what's inside the garage? Two parking spaces? So four, four in total?
Yeah.
And, and it's six units, right? So it's, it's three and three? And parking is two and two? I'm, the only question I had, and I don't, this, I don't, doesn't, it's not a question for me. It's more a question to the board if anyone has anything. I mean, because I like the unit mix, but this is a very like residential couple of streets. Anyone very familiar with this neighborhood think that, you know, this changes the nature of, you know, is out of scope with, with kind of what's, what's there. It's a lot of single-family homes. It is, you know, right next to it is, is a three-story structure, you know, as Sam mentioned, that has a couple of units. And then next to that is a pretty large apartment complex that is, you know, the cornered lot. So obviously that's, that's a little bit different kind of character. But in general, I thought it's obviously an improvement over what's there in terms of kind of bringing in more conformity. But that was just, you know, something I didn't know, anyone more familiar with the West Side Honey consideration.
I, I'll just say that if there was, what I actually like about this is that the proposal itself wasn't overkill. If, if they tried for, for stories, I think I would have had a very different opinion about it. And that and the elimination of, of the curb cut and the improvement in the landscaping, I think really that I, I, I think that there are a lot of really positive criteria along with the, the, the project. That, that said, you know, it's, it is what looks to be a perfectly nice house that they're, that they're taking down, but it is an oversized lot. So.
Okay. Well, let's, if no one else has any questions to base on this, Catherine?
I, I know that in one of the previous meetings we had, it was a civil building. And we asked them if there were other drawings that they had come up with or had been part of their paperwork that would fit more into the other buildings that were in the neighborhood. And they did. So I don't know if there are any other drawings that might of buildings or how to, to change this a little bit to make it fit more into the neighborhood. I, I, I don't know. I'm just asking that question because there was one where we did look at that last time and they did kind of alter it somewhat in color. And it, it fit more into the neighborhood. With existing structures.
Do you have like a, a rendering that shows what it would look like upon completion that you could put up with it?
Uh, no, for not this one.
Do you have? Maybe the front elevation and we can talk a little bit about.
You want me to?
Let me just take a quick. Yeah, I mean, I, I think the short answer is this project, and we can kind of get into it. Went through a lot of iterations. It, you know, it started back in 2019 as a very different type of concept. And it sort of ended here. You know, at this, at this two, three family concept. And so, and we can talk about that history if the board is interested, but you know, as it sort of sits right now, you've got two, three family buildings and they're adjacent to each other. They're connected. So you can kind of get a sense of that from, let's see. Yeah, Muktie, if you want to just zoom in on the.
The old one or the new?
The, the, I guess the front, the front facade, I think would be the best. Yeah.
The the, I guess, the front, the front facade, I think would be the best, yeah.
So this is the two D of the facade, that's why it doesn't show the colors or the depth correctly. But these are the materials. Uh I wish, but, you know, this is a red traditional brick and a black frame window.
And and you're putting that structure between what what appears currently to look like. A townhouse kind of thing. Or a row house, and then on the other side, what looks like, like a pitched roof house. And this looks like you're in the middle of a city. Right? Yeah, so I think Muthi, you know, some of the the choice selections, I mean, there is brick in the neighborhood. You know, the the glazing, some of the details on the building, they're all done. Uh in line with uh current code and in line with zoning. So so it is conforming in terms of the design elements of the property as well. Or the proposed, the proposed structure. I did also just want to make a note, because I. Um I believe you mentioned that, you know, the prob- the the current existing structure is a perfectly good house, it's. You know, i- in speaking to the clients, the boarded up property, uh it was looted before my client purchased it. Uh if I'm not mistaken, my client bought it out of foreclosure, uh and it's it's basically fallen down, so I I. You know, there's not much left there to salvage. If anything at all, so. I think going forward, you know, the g- the game plan on a site like this would be to rebuild something new. I I understand that, and I don't want to get, I don't want to get into, this isn't like our design, I I guess, like, there's. There's a, like, what looks like a multi-family right next to this place with nice cornice work. Um I guess I don't understand why someone wouldn't think, who's looking at this block. Uh and they want to subdivide, um put something that would. Because again, that's three stories, you're proposing three stories, you could, you could match the height. Um and you could put up something that would be visually uh complimentary instead of uh contrasting. But I don't want to get into, you know, an architectural uh review, because I agree with you, that's not necessarily what our consideration is.
It's true, there's the brick apartment building on the the corner, but I'm not really seeing. Anything else that's. That's really, you know, consistent with with this at all.
Yeah, I mean, I think in in terms of matching height, I think that would require variance, I mean, the 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 height that we're at is. Is the permitted height, I mean, this is about as, this is as high as you can go. You know, there are other examples that, I think, one sixty-nine Delaware is a six-unit building. I think Sam might have mentioned a couple of others, so i- it's not without precedent. You know, and again, it is two separate sites. Uh I know, I know we're kind of looking at it as a whole, but it is, you know, two separate sites. I understand that needing a height that would be a separate variance, and I honestly have no idea how tall the the unit is next to it. But who cares? Ask for more height, uh if it would, if it at least would look, uh you know, consistent with. You know, what's in the immediate vicinity of this property.
That's what I was referencing, Josh.
Yep.
Similar to what in the.
Yeah.
I- if it makes board more comfortable, I mean, in certain facade elements, we could work with staff. You know, during the uh during the final process. You know, but again, the do meet, you know, the current code. For height, right? But what, what in terms of glazing, in terms of masonry work, you know, there are design elements, you know, built into the code. That have to also be adhered to. I understand. Anyone else have any questions before we open up to the public, and then you could also think of potentially more questions? Okay, um let's open this up to the public. Francisco, you want to explain while you're opening up to the public?
Yeah.
Kind of how people call in and and what the deal is?
If anyone from the public has any questions or comments, please use the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen. Um if you're calling in, you must dial star nine to raise your hand, and then to unmute yourself. You can press bar six, and I do see a hand raised, so I'm promoting Susannah Carlson.
Okay, before we get started with comment. Is there a volunteer among the commissioners to be a timekeeper? Kim, okay, Commissioner Green is the timekeeper, uh and Commissioner Green will let you know. Uh you have three minutes um for your comments, um he'll let you know when you have one minute left.
And would you raise your right hand? Would you raise your right hand to be sworn? I can't see your right hand, put it close to your head.
Susanna, um we see you, great, thank you.
Great. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you can state and spell your full name and provide your address?
Certainly, my name is Susannah Carlson, S U S A N N A H. Last name Carlson, K A R L S S O N. My address is two zero four Delaware Avenue. I'm here today in my capacity as a board member of the Lincoln Park North Neighborhood Association and as council. Um I'm sorry, I didn't have a prepared statement for the board today, I only learned that this project was on today's agenda at nine thirty last night. When uh Mr. Charamy emailed me that it was going to be moving forward. Uh we'd had an extensive conversation uh with the association about this project with Mr. Charamy. And made a number of what we thought were extraordinarily reasonable requests. And received word at nine thirty last night that basically none of those would be considered by his client, which is extraordinarily disappointing. We do, you know, this is a, I I think the commissioners are correct in all of the sent- sentiments that have come up. Uh the neighborhood feels very, very strongly that this is a residential neighborhood, we bought into a residential neighborhood, we live in a residential neighborhood. We like it that way, we have a neighborhood association, we don't imagine ourselves living in a condominium village. Um and that is what um these project, this project and many that you're seeing that fall within our boundaries propose to. Convert our neighborhood into, um as you very rightly observed, this looks like a frontage that belongs in the middle of an urban landscape. While it is two subdivided properties, it appears on the facade as if it's one large apartment building. There used to be one family here, now there will be six families. There are no more streets, there is no more parking, there is no more, you know, an additional curb cut, but you're adding six families. Additionally, I agree that the facade and the aesthetic is absolutely inconsistent with the neighborhood. And the neighbors feel very, very strongly about that, this ha- is a neighborhood of pitched roofs and row homes. And farmhouses with the farmhouse peak. Um there's a very consistent aesthetic with the exterior exteriors. Of the one and two, and sometimes three family homes that fall in, especially in the middle of these blocks, which are the most residential. It is true that as you get closer to the arterials, where there's access to ingress and egress for traffic. You might see some of the larger buildings, um and those tend to differ in style, but the residential style is. Um and we wish that this project would have taken seriously the residential character of this neighborhood. And, you know, made style choices, design choices, bulk choices, um that reflected a a wish to fit into this neighborhood. Um we don't support this proposal, we do not support this project, we have had extensive conversations, you know, trying to find. A way to support it, and we very much want these improvements in our neighborhood, uh but as this project has been. As this project has been presented, it's absolutely unsatisfactory to the community, and uh Mr. Charamy knows that. And I'm disappointed that he proceeded today, frankly, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Promoting Matthew Velardo.
I don't see Matt.
Nope, there we go, or. That's strange. He's. He's in the panel, there's, there we go.
Yeah, he's on.
Hello, how's everybody doing?
Good, would you raise your right hand to be sworn, Matt? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Absolute, yes.
Thank you, and if you could just state and spell your name for the record and provide your address.
Matthew Velardo, M A T T H W, B as in Victor, I L A R D as in David, O. Fifty-four Suburbia Court, Jersey City, New Jersey, oh seven, three oh five.
Thank you.
Okay, so how's everybody doing? First of all, how's how's all the commissioners doing tonight? I see everybody, how you doing? So I'm here, um Councilwoman Prince Erin, um she couldn't be here today. So she asked me to make a statement in her behalf. So she, I meaning um Councilwoman, she is in support of the Lincoln Park North points. She appreciates, she appreciates that the developer has made changes to better reflect the neighborhood's character. But the additional requests are small and should be accommodated. So I have to um bring to the table.
Thank you, Matt, and it's great to see you.
Likewise, everybody be safe.
You too.
There are no other hands.
Okay, thank you. Any uh any questions uh at this point from from the board? Do we want to hear from staff first? Well, you know, I I would be, uh you know, make some responses, I mean, I think some allegations. Sure. Could I do that now? Yeah, absolutely. All right, thank you. No, I mean, I, you know, I I uh appreciate it. I think um you'd be hard pressed to find a project that has been influenced uh over the last two years. So much by a community. The project started very differently in two thousand and nineteen, we had worked with uh the councilwoman, uh who we had just heard from. On the project, uh this was a pre-COVID application, it was very different. And in those days, uh we were talking about uh additional units, but including affordable housing. Uh including additional parking, you know, there were different characteristics to that project. This board has seen one sixty-three Delaware on and off the agenda several times over the last two years. Each one of those times, it was pulled in response to either the councilwoman or the community association. The community association you just heard from this evening didn't even exist when this particular project was conceived. We had met with other community members uh many times, they had input on the project. We met with Lincoln North many times, they had input on the project. And and I I would like to say, the majority of uh requests have been greatly accommodated. In this project from, for, you know, th- throughout the course of this. I, i- and I and I've said it before, I I, it it is very rare that you see a project that has been impacted. Uh so frequently and so much by community input, uh as this particular one. The the size, the shape, the structures themselves are permitted. If we were talking about two family homes, we wouldn't even be here. So, you know, s- some of those concerns, while I understand them, uh we do have to look through them. Uh we have to do, look through a a lens, uh where we understand uh that the size, the shape, the structure of the property. Is in conformance with the with the current code. Beyond that, uh and in speaking with the client just a few moments ago, uh we would be willing to work with staff on additional. Design elements. You know, the concept of adding a cornice, uh or the concept of of modifying materials, so if this board would see fit. Uh that would be a a condition that could be added to the application. Um and if it would uh make the project more palatable, um the applicant would certainly be willing to do that. Well. I I'm just, I'm happy to discuss this with the board and with staff. I think that any type of the, these aren't going to be just like very minor cosmetic changes. Like talking about uh changing the front so that it would have a cornice, or putting on like a front porch so it would look like other. Houses on the street, I think would be a, would be a different application, it would, we wouldn't be looking at the same thing, I think for us to, we we can't vote on that. So we can vote on what's been presented, um or um we can table this. Unless we, anyone thinks differently, I'm happy to discuss it, but I don't think we're going to reach a different conclusion. Kim?
Yes, uh I did not really get any information as far as, I think it was Ms. Carlson. Uh representing uh Lincoln Park North. What were the issues that uh were not resolved? Even though you did some of them, what would the kinds of items that uh were not satisfied by that group? Mr. Charamy?
Oh, you're you're, I'm sorry, I thought you were asking. I mean, I don't know, yeah, I agree with Commissioner Green. We were given a list. You just give me one moment, we, yeah, we were given a list of uh of five or six items, I will uh address the ones that were not. But, you know, a- and and we're being a little picky here. The community association uh was requesting preconstruction survey for demolition and other things. And and to to all the properties surrounding it, our response was simply that the city requires uh preconstru- preconstruction surveys during. The course of demolition and during the course of construction, it's part of the building department requirements. Uh they wanted to know what we could do in in it, in excess of building apartment requirements. Uh there was an inspection of adjacent properties to ensure construction damage uh to the neighbors wouldn't happen. Again, these are impact studies that may or may not be required by the building department, but we would certainly uh uh adhere to the code. The. None of those, none of those could have been actual issues, because your response would have been, if those are required, we will do that. We we, and and it was our response, the the request was, we don't like what the building department requires, we want additional requirements. The community association um uh wants bird-safe glass on all, uh on all the windows. Uh and all the glazing on the building. It's not something that the developer uh can agree to at the moment. Uh bird-safe glass is typically used, from our understanding and some of our research, on commercial buildings, these are residential. Properties, they've got residential uh uh windows. Um we had told them it is something that we can look into, but but today, we can't agree to it. Um what we did agree to was screening, and what we did agree to uh was the additional forestry work. One item that we we couldn't agree to, uh they wanted uh two curb cuts and two garages. It has been the practice of the planning board, and and I believe this board, that when we're subdividing properties. Uh that staff's strong recommendation and and this board's practice has been to uh pro- pro- uh promote. On street parking by having a single curb cut, and so that's what the the project reflects. The other issues, I mean, had come up over over time, scaling down of the building, you know, from from more uh. You know, from from larger concepts, I mean, the the project itself reflects literally dozens of changes from several. Several people in the community, not just Lincoln Park North. As I said, we were dealing with this project since two thousand and nineteen, so it is. You know, it may not be perfect, but it is a true reflection, uh almost a, almost a, also a project by vote. I don't know how else to say it, I mean, it's a true reflection of all these different uh thoughts and concepts pulling at it. And this is where we are, I mean, we've been on and off the agenda at least three times since two thousand and nineteen. There's not much more that a project like this can sustain, we're about uh, we're about where we are. Um and if you hear the frustration in my voice, it's just because it's, you know, it's nearly three years uh of this, so. Here we are. Yeah, any, any comments to add?
A lot of the things Mr. Charamy saying are are correct. This has been around for three years, uh maybe it's. This has been around for three years. Uh, it was a substantially larger project in scope, uh, in density, in size. It has been scaled down multiple times, uh, to the point where, uh, myself and Tanya have basically said to them, uh, you know, the most we would tolerate is, uh, two individual buildings with three units apiece. Um, we continue to try to strive for the shared curb cut. Um, I appreciate the applicant for providing parking in this situation, considering that, um, parking is scarce in many parts of the city. In terms of the design changes, uh, that could make it look more like, uh, the surrounding area. To be honest, it's a it's a give and take. You take away the parking. Uh, maybe you get a better looking design, but there's going to be more on-street parking. Um, if you, you know, you might have two curb cuts, taking away multiple spaces. It's it's a difficult back and forth. Planning's perspective is that currently the site is a, an older house that was approved for demo. Um, it has a large, uh, secondary structure in the back that is used for multiple different, um, uses in the past. Uh, it's like a giant parking garage back there. Um, that does not fit with the neighborhood entirely. You know, given, given the variance is requested and what has been approved in the past, planning approves of the application as shown, uh, based on, um, what this board has voted on in the past in areas the R one also that, um, there were recommendations within the two thousand and twenty Jersey City master plan that call for, uh, the use of third units in different parts of the R one, while not approved, uh, in any particular zoning changes. This is something that could come to pass down the road and is often is approved by this board. So I asked the board that it looks at this with, you know, the the project on the merits of, uh, new development, almost like infill development to a sense, and that, uh, the recent changes, so the recent recommendations of the two thousand and twenty master.
So, um, I would just like to say that I'm not questioning a lot of that with the curb cut, et cetera. And I'm just looking at this, the facade of the building, and I've seen this same look in other, um, architectural plans that have been submitted by Mooty, and they fit into the other areas. But for some reason, just can the facade fit in a little bit more into what's away there than it could? I mean, the rest of it, I I don't, I don't have objection to that, but it's just what the, what it looks like, that it stands out like a sore thumb in that neighborhood. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I I agree with Catherine that uh, everything about this plan I like, except what it looks like. Um, and and I, and I, that to me is frustrating because there's a building right next to it that they could have used as a, as guidance.
Right. Right.
Honestly, I don't care about the park.
No.
If you eliminate, like, the parking and it looks more like it fit in the neighborhood, I I think that'd be much more palatable, not probably not to the community, but to to me. Anyone else have any thoughts? Anyone want to vote?
Are we voting to table to pass? What I mean, what are you saying, Josh?
We're, we're voting on the application that's for us.
Okay.
You don't have to be in favor of of the of the motion, uh, to approve the application, just to make the motion. Anyone on the board can make a motion.
Well. Uh, make a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, design and the case, uh, Z twenty oh seven seven at one sixty-three Delaware Avenue.
I second the motion.
I I don't want to, uh, uh, interject when the board is voting, but, uh, my client would be amenable to tabling and presenting a, a different facade design, uh, if we could carry to next week, to the next available meeting.
Would that give us enough time to have the the rendering submitted?
Uh, I think we could get it done.
Okay.
Ambitious, don't you think? The next meeting, maybe, maybe two meetings. I don't know what the calendar looks like in the next meeting.
I'll follow the board's direction.
Francesco, what what's the, what's the board look like in next, next meeting?
Uh, so once we clear this today, it seems pretty empty.
Actually. Provided we clear this today.
One, one second. I mean, actually, quickly check. New planner.
Can we just say adjourn to a date certain at this point? Do we need to know definitively at this moment?
But then he would have to re-know this, right?
Oh, okay.
Uh, yeah. So for the eleventh, we have five applications already in, um, in queue. And then for the twenty-fifth, there's one, two, three applications in queue.
And we might do one oh seven New York Avenue. Uh, which is what we're going to suggest tonight. So you want to make it to the August twenty-fifth?
That's, that's fine. Yeah.
Okay.
So for everyone out there, we're going to carry this to August twenty-fifth. There'll be no more notices. So if you're interested in this application, especially Ms., uh, Carlson, was it?
Yes.
Well, August twenty-fifth is when we'll, uh, come back with perhaps a new facade.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we, before we proceed to the next case on the agenda, um, I thought we could really quickly do case Z twenty-two dash zero three two. Uh, it's just, uh, seeking a two-year extension and.
That might be a good idea. Yeah, that's why we could, uh, yeah, are clearing out. So I don't know, is Mr. Lean around, uh, Francesco?
Promoting Thomas Lee.
Okay, so, uh, where he gets on the screen, this is a notice case, and we do have his notices, his affidavit, a proof of service, notice of publication. So Bridget, remark this as a one for this application.
Okay, this will be a one for Z twenty-two oh thirty-two.
So we just marked your notices, Tom, so go right ahead.
Thank you so much, counsel, and thank you very much to the board for jumping me up. I'll be as quick as I possibly can. Uh, this was an approval that was granted back in two thousand and nineteen for a five-story building containing twenty-eight units and twenty-three parking spaces. It is an approximately nine thousand square foot space right next to the, uh, West Police Precinct. Uh, we are seeking a two-year extension. This evening, we applied for this extension back in May. Uh, we're already past one year. Uh, this expired on June twenty-seventh of, uh, uh, this year, or it would be one year past. So it expired on June twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty-one. So that's why we're asking for the two years, so we can just get to, uh, two thousand and twenty-three here.
Anyone have any questions? Uh, well, we'll open it to the public, but I don't think there's any public comment, I would hope. Uh, anyone from the public have any comments or questions on this two-year extension?
I don't see any hands raised at this time.
Okay, let's close the public. Um, anyone from the board have any questions? And if not, does anyone want to make a motion?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the two-year extensions for case Z twenty-two dash oh thirty-two, uh, five seventy-three Jackson Avenue.
Second.
All right. Commissioner Patel?
Hi.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Silva?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner.
Is that?
Yeah, I called you.
Yes.
Commissioner Donnelly?
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor.
Again, thank you very much to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hope to see construction soon.
I do too.
Okay, uh, let's proceed with case Z twenty dash, uh, one zero zero. The applicant is two fourteen dash two sixteen, sorry, the address is two sixteen Palisade Avenue.
I don't, oh, okay, promoting Chuck Harrington.
But before Chuck gets, oh, there's Chuck. Uh, Chuck, we we do have your notices for this case as well. Your affidavit, proof of service, notice of publication. So we'll mark that as a one for this application.
Okay, this will be a one in evidence for this application.
Thank you. Uh, I don't know if, uh, Calisto Burton has been promoted and Charles Height. Oh, there's Calisto.
Now I'm here.
And Charles Height, you said? I'm promoting.
Okay. So, uh, thank you, um, for the record, Charles Harrington of Connel Foley, on behalf of the applicant. Uh, just for a little bit of a background for the board and for the record, uh, we were before this board back on April twenty-eighth. Um, with the project, uh, we had presented it. There were a number of comments and questions from from the board and the community, and we had requested at that time to adjourn it so that we could take another look at some of these questions and see how we could address it to try to, you know, try to, uh, address the the concerns, um, and questions, um, by the board and the community. Uh, we have made, uh, changes, uh, since that, that presentation, uh, which we believe makes it a better project. Um, as you'll see tonight, we, um, this project is, uh, has reduced the number of units from twenty units to seventeen units. So it's a less dense building. Uh, we are proposing, uh, two moderate income units, which would consist of a one-bedroom unit and a two-bedroom unit. Um, we have, uh, created a, uh, front yard setback. I believe it's about sixteen feet. Um, so there's, uh, there was a hundred percent lock coverage initially back in in April. Now, now at the first floor, you're about eighty-five percent, uh, coverage, and then it reduces as you go up the building. Um, we have created, uh, more office space on the second floor. Uh, the prior, um, the prior application had medical office space with residential in the back. Now that that floor is entirely medical and office space. I, and the the parking has been reduced somewhat, and you'll see during the presentation, as a result of this setback, uh, we believe that that addresses, um, a lot of the concerns, uh, that that were made or voiced in, uh, April about queuing, getting into the garage. Uh, the garage door was planned to be open all the time, and we'll walk you through that while while we think that's better. And then you have, uh, you know, some some other better conditions here. Um, so we we also did present, uh, to the community again. I, I'll let them speak for themselves because I believe they, you know, they still have concerns and issues, uh, with the proposal. But we think overall that that, uh, the changes we've made, um, have addressed, uh, many, if not all, the the questions that were presented at the last meeting. And we we believe we have a, it's a better project. Um, so with that said, we'd like to just take you through the project again. We're very aware that that we had a presentation at the last meeting, so we're going to try to keep it, you know, on the shorter side. Um, I have Anthony Vandermark, um, our architect. Calisto Burton is our traffic engineer and and civil engineer, uh, and, uh, Charles Height. So I'm going to ask Anthony to lead us off.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And just state and spell your name for the record.
Sure, that's Anthony Vandermark. Last name is Vandermark, B as in Victor, A N D E R M A R K.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and we accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
All right. So Anthony, if you could walk us through the the project and identify the the changes that that we made since the last time we were before the board?
Uh, yes.
And and do we, before you start, I just, I want to mark this slide deck as eight-two.
I'll mark it and you'll send it in, Chuck?
Yes.
Okay. Eight-two in evidence.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, to give everybody just a a brief, uh, overview once again, uh, of the project. Um, subject site is six thousand six hundred and forty square feet. It's on the eastern side of Palisade Avenue. Um, it's at the intersection of Jefferson Avenue, uh, and Palisades Avenue that runs both north to south. Uh, it has a sixty-foot frontage and with a hundred and ten-foot, uh, depth of the overall site area. Um, directly behind us is the, uh, Carepoint Parking Lot. Uh, that dimension to the cliff line is approximately a hundred and thirty feet from the back of our property, uh, to the face of the cliff line, and then there's the drop-off. Pre-existing conditions, uh, immediately to the north, adjacent structure is a tall one-story, uh, Carepoint Health Human, uh, Resources Facility. Directly to the south is a three-story, uh, mixed-use building, uh, pharmacy, uh, uh, commercial, uh, retail at the base with two residential, uh, levels above. Um, one of the things of note, um, that Chuck had previously mentioned is that, um, part of this application, uh, and some of the amendments that we had made, is that the building has been now set back sixteen feet off the property line. Um, I just want to talk about the existing context in this aerial um, created by my office is that, as you can see, the structure's to the north. Uh, besides the one immediately, uh, to our south, the three-story, which is that zero property line, there's substantial setbacks uh, to the buildings of the south and then towards the corner again. So what we were looking to do is you, we had listened, uh, previously about, uh, some of the comments about the building being right at the front property line. Uh, and I'm about to show you is that the building has been moved back sixteen feet, and it's more consistent with a lot of the setbacks now that are on this, uh, this block running north-south. Very brief overview, the existing site area is not changed. Uh, we do have a reduction in lock coverage, uh, at the first floor from a hundred percent to eighty-five percent. The upper floors remain the same, however, their distance from the property line has been set back. So we're at seventy-nine and then sixty-five, seventy-nine at floors, uh, two, three, and four, and the fifth floor is at sixty-five percent. Original application had zero-foot front yard setback. We are now proposing a sixteen-foot front yard setback, going back to, uh, consistency, uh, in context of the pre-existing neighborhood. We feel this is, uh, more suitable. Um, as part of this proposal, we're proposing a eighteen-foot wide curb cut. Uh, this is both for safety, uh, and, uh, vehicular ingress and egress, uh, out of our proposed garage location. Also, the driveway apron and the, uh, garage doors at eighteen feet, so you can have one car actually, uh, entering the building, one car egressing the building at the same time. Uh, both of them can queue, uh, within our property boundary and then slowly make their way out across the sidewalk and into the intersection. Uh, the side yard, uh, setbacks and the rear yard setback, there's no change. We're still at zero. Um, the rear yard setback at the upper floor is originally was twenty-two, and it's been reduced to six. As Chuck had previously mentioned, uh, the other application, uh, that you had before you in April, was that twenty residential units. We are now at seventeen. Uh, we had three affordable units and we're proposing two. The second floor, we had a medical office, uh, that was mixed in with residential units that has, uh, since been amended. So we're now proposing a medical office at two thousand two hundred and forty-one square feet, uh, and to the eastern portion of the building at the same floor level, an office suite at two thousand two hundred and fifty-four. Original application at twenty-three parking spaces. Because of the reduction in lock coverage at the first floor to eighty-five percent, we are at fifteen parking spaces, eleven which are mechanical. Original application, uh, I don't know if the board remembers, is that we had proposed during the hours of operation of the medical office, we were proposing an open garage door. Uh, we have since now, uh, amended the design so that a car could now, uh, enter the property boundary. queue an electric eye that the door would open and then enter the garage. And then the garage door will close behind them. So garage door will no longer be open at all times during the medical office hours. As our traffic engineer, Calisto, we'll get into later is that we have added no parking bollards at the intersection and a no F turn sign. The original height was proposed was at five stories and fifty feet. We're still at five stories and fifty feet. However, the front yard setback on the fifth floor has been amended from fifteen feet all the way to thirty one feet for our property boundary. Proposed project, again, now with the generous sixteen foot front yard setback has changed in aesthetic. As you can see, the building is set back and now we have included a side yard planter area on the driveway apron and a substantial front yard planted area in between the driveway apron and the entry for both the medical office and residential. At the sixteen foot setback, again, you can see the full car length before exiting our property boundary onto the sidewalk. We are proposing a three story portion with a four story mansard roof. And again, the fifth story is setback an additional fifteen feet off the front building facade. So again, I will show you some existing buildings in the neighborhood, and we think the design here is contextual to a lot of the architecture that's taking place here on Palisades Avenue around Jefferson Avenue. Again, we are proposing two street trees. We are proposing a new bench seating area as well as bicycle parking up against the curb line. Very brief general overview of the seventeen units we are proposing, we are proposing three two bedrooms, twelve one bedrooms and two one bedrooms plus ten. Again, we have one medical office, one office space. We are proposing one one thousand seven hundred and sixty seven square foot roof deck. We are also proposing one thousand eight hundred and sixty two square feet of green roofing area. So that's the equivalent of forty three percent of the overall setback roof and then twenty eight percent of the side area. As previously stated, we're proposing all new sidewalks and curbing. We're proposing two new street trees, a new seating bench as well as bicycle parking on the exterior for two bikes, a substantial front planted area, eighteen feet wide curb cut with the driveway apron entering the building. Four story portion here, again, sixteen feet off of the property line with a five story portion set way back at thirty one feet. Again, working your way back into the building, we have proposed a colored paver system with your typical sidewalk, you know, with outside of property boundary to the curb line. We have four parking spaces within the parking garage for the visitors of the medical office and the commercial office. All employees of the commercial office, medical office will be parking offsite. We think it will be at the Carepoint Parking Facility. That's about three blocks to the south of us. There'll be a second garage door for the residential tenants. As you can see, there is six mechanical parking spaces. That is two tiers. So the equivalent of that is eleven parking spaces for in front. So we're proposing fifteen feet, excuse me, fifteen total parking spaces as part of the project. Visitors coming within the garage, we have a widened driveway aisle here at twenty six feet. And we do have a turnaround space within the front garage so that people can turn the car around and actually exit facing outwards. And they'll have enough queuing space on the driveway apron before they hit the sidewalk and then ultimately the intersection. Project is proposing a cellar, which will have fourteen bicycle parking spaces within building envelope. We are proposing a stormwater detention system as part of this application. The cellar will be accessed via elevator and one stair. As we make our way up the building, again, at the second floor, medical office to the western portion of the plan and a office, commercial office to the eastern part of the plan. Both uses are compliant with the medical use or the medical zone. So we're not requiring a variance in one of those two spaces. The leftover roof area will be outdoor space for the rear office facing east. That floor is three and four. We're proposing six units per floor. Again, four one bedrooms per floor and they range from six hundred and twenty four to seven hundred and fifty four in square feet. They're proposing a one bedroom plus ten at seven hundred and thirty five square feet and a nine hundred and sixty square foot two bedroom. That's per floor, so that is twelve in total. At the upper floor, we are proposing five units, four one bedrooms that range from six hundred to six hundred and eighty two and one two bedroom again at nine hundred and sixty. As previously stated, we are proposing a one thousand seven hundred and sixty seven square foot roof deck to the eastern portion of the overall roof area. We're proposing a one thousand eight hundred and sixty two square foot extensive green roof with a centrally located bullpen mechanically screened condenser area. Going back to the architecture, again, as you can see, immediately to the south is the side of the taller three story mixed use project. We're proposing four stories with a setback. As you can see, we have a modular brick masonry. Two flanking end colors are the same. We have essentially located color that's slightly darker at U. We picked this palette because the predominant palette in this neighborhood happens to be of grays and beiges and whites. Again, the mansard roof with the cornice at the third floor is something that you'll see that's repeated in several pieces of architecture in the immediate neighborhood. The top floor, the fifth floor now, which is setback thirty one feet, as you can see, you can only see the very top edge. And this is literally standing in the middle of the street. And again, driveway apron with a paver pattern right to the left side or to the north side of the property. Just talking about context, immediately across the intersection is a taller four story masonry with a mansard roof. We tried to pick some elements that's built into our facade that pick the fuse from this piece of architecture. As we go further south, on the same side of our block, again, mansard roof is something that seems to be a kind of a predominant design feature in, in a lot of the architecture on this side of Palisade also. Going back to the exterior, the overall building height is fifty feet, five stories. Each floor is ten feet floor to floor. On the exposed areas on the side facades will be hardy cement board panel system. And to the rear, again, a hardy cement board panel system with some glazing mixed in with mechanical balconies at floors three, four and five. Immediately to the rear yard, as the building wraps, we are proposing module brick masonry to match the front of the building with a pattern again to simulate window openings in the rear elevation. Just in closing about the building, I, I think it will be a, a good addition to the neighborhood. And again, I, I think aesthetically and contextually, I think the building fits in very nicely with the overall preexisting neighborhood. This concludes my presentation, Chuck.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll assume we'll wait till all the professionals have made their presentation before questions?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then what's the next witness is Mr. Calisto Burton. He was qualified as an expert in civil engineering and traffic engineering at the last meeting, and I'd offer him again in that regard. Okay, we accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Hey, would you raise your name for? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And if you could state and spell your formant in record?
Yes, it's Calisto Burton, C A L I S T O Burton, B E R T I N.
Thank you.
If you could speak to, you know, the, the site and, and the changes that we've made and, and how they relate to, you know, traffic and, and safety in the area.
Sure. Well, excuse me, after the last meeting, I was given some homework assignments by the planner. And so we reviewed some of the studies that were prepared by Jersey City. The first being the Jersey City School Travel Plan to see what input they would have on the site. And come, some of the takeaways that we came from it is that they promoted painted bump, bump outs at intersections. I'll explain that more later. Flashing crosswalk signs and to enforce no parking zones. That was to improve the safety for schoolchildren and their travel plan. We also looked at the Jersey City Bicycle Master Plan. And one of the takeaways from that is that they desired a dedicated protected bike lane along Palisade Avenue. Not much we could do about that, but that was, that's the takeaway that came from there. And then I also reviewed the zero, the vision zero accident plan. And that plan identified certain areas that were high injury network streets. Fortunately, this area is not one of them, but a couple of blocks away is not here. Again, they reinforced the idea of no parking within intersections to improve visibility of pedestrian crossings, to ensure that there's adequate lighting and to have painted crosswalks. In addition, we, we did do an accident study. I think I presented that at the last meeting, but in, in a one year period, there were twelve accidents. Well, no, I'm sorry, nine in a twelve month period. But there was one vehicle where it did strike a pedestrian. One accident where a motor vehicle hit a biker. It was an Uber Eats biker. And then there was one accident that happened at night where someone on a scooter hit a pole. Now, the last thing we did was we looked at what we call warrant analysis for traffic lights. There's a document called the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices that dictates traffic control devices in the United States. Other places like Australia and Canada use it as well. So we, we, you know, stop signs, traffic lights, everything signs on highways, on local roads, interstate, all have to follow a same guideline throughout the United States. And that's this manual. And one of the items in the manual on traffic lights is that it has to meet cer- certain warrants or certain criteria before a traffic light could be installed in an intersection. And much of that deals with either accidents at an intersection, which this did not meet, or volume and either pedestrian volume or traffic volume. And the intersection doesn't meet the thresholds on any of the criteria for a traffic light. And if you remember, this is one Palisade Avenue at Jefferson, and Jefferson is one way flowing away from the intersection. So we don't have people entering Palisade Avenue from Jefferson. So based on all the studying and homework that we did, we, we proposed a couple of changes. Well, one to the site that was already discussed, but I'll just talk about the traffic aspects of it and then to the intersection. We already proposed to replace the curbs and sidewalks along the frontage on Palisade Avenue and to put in street trees to create a street skate. We also had proposed to mill Palisade Avenue that across the site frontage and into the intersection, that means going scarifying the asphalt pavement and putting down new asphalt pavement. And by doing that, we would re-strike the crosswalks. Okay? But as a result of doing our homework, we came up with a couple of other roadway improvements. And if you're familiar with the area, a couple of blocks to the south is Fleet Street. And I found that those improvements had been installed in Fleet Street. So we would do a bump out, a painted bump out on our side of the street. That's the east side of Palisade Avenue opposite Jefferson. And the, what would happen is that we'd have a stripe five feet off the curb and then we'd put in these flexible bollards. And the whole purpose of that is to discourage people from parking within the intersection. We discussed that last time, that a lot of people park in the intersection. I mean, all the time people park in the intersection. And these, the, these bollards and striping would discourage that. Because in order to paint, you'd have to knock over a bollard. I mean, I'm sorry, in order to park, you'd have to knock over a bollard. Just to the south of us on the same side of Palisade Avenue is a bus stop. And people we found were parking in the bus stop. So we proposed. Well, okay, yes, you could go put it, yes. All right. So we're looking at the site plan. And the painted bump out is shown across the frontage. There's a, a double line with circles in the middle. Those circles represent the bollards. And then to the right of that is another striped area, which is the bus stop. Right? So that's what we propose doing. Now that will improve visibility of the crosswalk. Can you see the pedestrian crosswalk that leaves in front of the drugstore that goes across Palisade Avenue? Right now, with cars parked along the curb in that area, motorists can't see pedestrians who want to travel west across the street. We don't have that problem on the other side of Palisade Avenue because right opposite the site is a bus stop. And so people, well, I have found people don't park in the bus stop. So as you're heading south, you could see the right side of the crosswalk in the intersection well, but you can't necessarily see people leaving the sidewalk and entering the crosswalk. Now, we proposed, and it's not shown on this, it's shown on the engineering plans, but we could just refer to this. We will put flashing pedestrian crosswalk signs. It's a regular crosswalk sign, but there's a flashing light on the bottom of it. So as people drive by, they could see it, it stands out that it's, it's a crosswalk. Right? So there happens to be adequate lighting at this intersection, so there's no improvements that have to be done to that. And let's see, and, and there is a crosswalk, but as I said, we were going to repaint it. Now, so these all improve traffic safety at this intersection because pedestrians will be much more visible and people will not park in the intersection because they're not supposed to park in the intersection. Now, we were told the, the building is now setback sixteen feet from the street right of way line. Before, it was right on the right of way line. So a car coming out of the garage would then come right out onto the sidewalk. That isn't the case. Now, as a car comes out of the building, it can park completely within the driveway and not encroach into the sidewalk and a motorist can look to the left and right before entering Palisade Avenue. We had previously restricted left turns out of the site. That restriction remains. So people leaving the site can only turn right to head north on Palisade Avenue. Perhaps that's not needed on off-peak hours, but that's the way we have it proposed, that there would be no left turns out of the site. We will permit left turns into the site. That's a lot easier to make because the, someone heading south on Palisade Avenue can make a left turn. The only conflict they have would be someone heading north on Palisade Avenue. And the traffic light at Route one thirty nine creates gap in the northbound flow. So we feel that a left turn into the site is safe. Now, the other thing is the driveway is eighteen feet wide so that a car entering the site can enter even though there are, a car may be leaving the site. So a car leaving the site can be parked there while another car enters. There is going to be a garage door. There will be a sensor, say, four or five feet off the building, but on the property. So as a car approaches the garage door, it'll hit the sensor and then the garage door will automatically open. We do have to add a sign to the garage door that says, you know, approach slowly, garage door will open automatically. So it is proposed that this way, residents and the visitors can come pull into the garage and not be hindered by the garage door. They don't have to call anybody to open up the garage door. The garage door will open. Perhaps at night, we might disable the photocell that would allow someone to come in and have, the residents would have a garage door opener. So when they pull into the driveway, they can open up the garage door. Visitors, if you could see, it's only 17 apartments. They would be able to pull into the driveway and call up to have their, whoever they're visiting, open up the garage door. We just thought that might be a better procedure for safety. And as one of the other plans showed, there's plenty of room inside the site to queue cars. If there's no parking spot, yes, if you want to show me the interior parking driveway? Yes. Yes, right there. So the driveway, you can hardly see it, it's 26 feet wide. The standard driveway is 24. We do driveways at 22 feet, so there's plenty of room for cars to maneuver. And then there's a large drop-off turnaround area. That's 14 feet wide by 26 and 18, you know, so it's 40 feet long. Plenty of room for cars to pull in and maneuver if they're waiting for a parking spot or if they came in to drop someone off. Then they could turn around and there's room to do that and pull out. So they're driving out and no one has to back out. All right. So I think those changes are the big changes to this plan that promote traffic safety. I think the intersection, by virtue of removing illegally parked cars and providing better visibility to crosswalk, this intersection will be a safer intersection. Anthony already talked about the parking on site and so forth, so I don't think I need to go through that. And that is, that'll conclude my testimony unless there's any questions.
Okay, well, we'll save the questions until after Charles is completed. So at this time, I'd like to move right into Mr. Height's testimony.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, Charles. Excuse me, would you raise your right hand for him?
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could just state your name for the record?
Yes, Charles Height, last name spelled H.E.Y.D.T.
Thank you.
And we'd offer Mr. Height, an expert in planning.
We accept Mr. Height's qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, board members. I did appear last meeting on this application and did present my testimony in full. So I won't go through that testimony. It's still part of this record. I really just wanted to hone in on some of the changes and how they relate to the variance requests and what we view them as improvements. First and foremost, we still are requesting a used variance. So just in summary form, we need to meet the particular suitability test. We believe that this property is sufficiently sized. It's 6,640 square feet to accommodate the proposed development. What we're offering to this board is the balance between the residential units and the office, as well as the parking, are all an appropriate mixture and balance of development, given that even though we're the end district across Palisade, we do have substantial amount of residential. So it's a transitional use on an appropriate property. We did discuss the end district in detail, but this is a unique property. Other properties in this district are smaller. And there are other properties that are substantially larger, some of the medical properties associated with the hospital. So we do have a unique opportunity here to propose what we refer to as a transitional use, balancing all of the mixture of uses in the area. So that's with respect to the used variance. Obviously, we are requesting a five-story structure. 10 stories is permitted. Obviously, we're proposing a use that's not permitted. So we're trying to balance that. We're not proposing 10 stories. We're proposing five. Part of the new master plan does discuss five stories. And again, part of the changes here create a substantially greater front yard step back in earnest, really, to accommodate the improvements that grade with parking or vehicles entering and exiting the building for more visibility. But that greater step back helps provide for a little bit of relief from the proposed building. So also, the step back decreases the lot coverage. So that was technically a bulk variance that was subsumed with the used variance. We bring that actually into a little bit of closer conformity where previously was approximately 100 square, 100%. And now it's being proposed at 85%, where 80 would be permitted. So again, it's also reducing the scale of that building footprint. We're reducing the units, as I mentioned in my prior testimony. The range in this area for multifamily uses, obviously comparing apples to apples, is approximately 93 to 133 units per acre. What this change represents in the reduction of units is approximately 115 units per acre. And again, that's right within that, that range. So it would be like the average within that overall range. Again, we're changing the layouts with respect to the medical offices, trying to isolate that use, that component of the building, which I think is an improvement as well. And we still are providing an appropriate amount of parking spaces to accommodate this level of use. So from a positive criteria, I think the improvements at the grade increase the visibility. We're able to add more landscaping and really just provide an overall benefit to this street scape. We did coordinate, as Mr. Burton said, with the city in terms of some of the other circulation planning visions. And just try and implement some of those techniques into this design with the bollards and trying to improve the overall function of this intersection to the best that we can with this application. Think that was the summary in terms of the positive criteria. Again, the negative criteria still stands from my prior testimony. The one thing that just in reviewing my testimony, my notes, the purpose of the end district, and I'm reading here, is to recognize existing medical facilities in the city and other medical-related uses traditionally associated with these facilities. That's our goal with this application, is to speak to medical offices to provide for some of that use, but also recognize that it is a transitional area that's right across from a substantially residential zone. So I believe we're meeting the intent with this application. And it's a balanced application and meets the burden of proof for used variants. That's all I had prepared.
Okay, thank you, Charles. So that would complete our presentation on the revised project.
Okay, great. I don't know if I was here for the first one. Does anyone have any questions at this point from the board? The one thing that jumped out at me, and I don't know this neighborhood nearly as well as other people on the board. So one, I can't believe that open parking lot that Carepoint has, but that has little to do, I guess, with this application. But, I mean, whoa, the city should be on that. And more pertinent to this is, why do we need so much parking? It's practically one-to-one parking. And like, great, have 17 units, have 20 units. But, I mean, this is a, this is a big street, relatively close, I think, to public transit. I, I mean, this seems like a good opportunity to eliminate parking. I don't know what anyone else thinks. I guess other people must have thought other things than that.
The public transit is the boss, which is not terribly reliable. And there was a tremendous amount of neighbors who, who commented. I would rather hold questions till we hear from the public.
Let's hear from the public.
And just, Mr. Chairman, just to note that the goal here or intent would be to do a condominium form of ownership, so that, I think that was driving the parking issue as well.
So let's hear from the public.
Anyone from the public has any questions or comments, please raise your hand. I see three hands, or if you're going to promote, the first hand promoting Graham.
I raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And if you can state and spell your full name and provide your address?
G.R.A.H.A.M., last name S.H.I.M.B.E.R.G. My address is 135 Palisade Avenue.
Thank you.
As a resident of this neighborhood for the past 10 years, we haven't seen many buildings like this come into the neighborhood. So the addition of having a five-story building in the neighborhood in an already cleared lot sets a precedent for other builders that they can clear lots and erect buildings of a similar scale, which is something that we in this neighborhood do not welcome. I think that the number of lower or affordable income housing from the original plan has been cut down. I think we'd like to see more affordable housing in an area that a lot of people are being priced out of. As a father of a nine-year-old, and it is a transient area, it would be lovely if my son could have more friends that would stick around in the neighborhood. We're also in opposition to the medical offices as there are already a large number of vacant medical offices in the area that are not occupied. Those are my feelings.
Thank you.
Promoting Tom Demus.
Hi, could you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And just state and spell your name for the record and provide your address.
Sure. First name's Tom, T.O.M. Last name's Demus. That's D as in David, E.A., M as in Mary, U.S. as in Sam. I live at 11 Jefferson Ave, Apartment 1, Jersey City, New Jersey, 07306.
Thank you.
So I'm here in two capacities. One is I live diagonally across the street from where the proposed property development is. I'm also here as the Vice President of the Sergeant Anthony Park Neighborhood Association. I will say and, you know, want to make clear that, you know, over the course of the last few months, we have met with the developer and his attorney twice, his planner, his architect. And it is certainly true that they have moved in small strides towards meeting some of the concerns of the Neighborhood Association. But I want to emphasize that the small movement kind of masks the bigger problem, which we think is unaddressed. And that is that this is a building that is set in the medical zone. It is a five-story building that is largely a residential building. I want to emphasize the residential aspect of most of this building. It is a mostly residential building in the medical district. It is way larger in terms of its overall height and composure than surrounding residential buildings, which raises the question and raises the concern. And the reason that the Neighborhood Association is unanimously opposed to the proposed construction is that it is really seeking something that they couldn't have on their own. They couldn't have a five-story purely residential building where it's situated because it's a medical, you know, it's a zone for medical. At the same time, if they wanted to switch the zoning or the use to comport with, say, a regular residential building, well, it's too large. So they're trying to have it both ways. I think when you hear terms like transitional use, to steal a term from Mr. Height, that's an indication as to what is going on here. They want to have their key.
One minute.
I don't want to overemphasize, but I do want to drive the point home that, you know, that sort of, you know, precedent for, you know, a used variance will change, and at least in the Neighborhood Association, will set a precedent for change in a way that we may not appreciate going forward. It certainly would be nice to have something there, something to, you know, take up what is otherwise an empty lot. But a very large building, a five-story building, and it's really five plus because there is a little stack on top, that sets a precedent for the future. And that's a concern. So I'm going to emphasize again the fact that the Neighborhood Association is unanimously opposed to the proposed development.
Thanks, Tom.
Promoting Norris.
Hello, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, but I can't see you.
Okay, well, I'm trying to make myself visible here. I'm not sure quite how to do that.
If you're on a laptop, it's right next to the mute button, so it should say start video.
Oh, there it is. Okay, thanks a lot. There we go.
Hi, please raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state and spell your full name and provide your address.
Norris, N.O.R.R.I.C.E. Raymaker, R.A.Y.M.A.K.E.R. 109 Palisade Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey.
Thank you.
So I agree with Tom Demus when he says that this project seems to be taking advantage and asking for a used variance. It seems to be disguising itself as a medical use building when indeed it is an attempt to build luxury condos in a neighborhood that is not in support of luxury condos. We would like to see a smaller scale, or I would like to see a smaller scale building. We would like to see more affordable or low-income units in this neighborhood. And also, I don't like the fact that there is no backyard. The property is on the ground level. It's at 100%. And that, you know, going forward and in future, if the properties on either side are developed, they're going to be boxed in by this structure occupying the entire ground floor. Thank you very much. Oh, can I also, sorry, one more thing. The predominant zone is R1 in this neighborhood. And this proposed building is double the units of what in R3 zone would allow. And, you know, because of the, you know, this request for the variance, we would like to see a higher number of low-income units if it's granted. Thank you.
Promoting Alicia Rogers.
Hi, if you can raise your right hand and unmute yourself.
Hi.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And just state and spell your full name and provide your address.
Alicia Rogers, A L I C I A. R O D G E R S, eleven Jefferson Ave.
Thank you.
So first I'd like to point out that there were just, there were two additional accidents that I was present for that was mentioned earlier back at Stilo. A little boy was clipped and a woman was also hit. So that's four. I knew of three, so now there's actually officially four. The new plan, it's beautiful. It's really aesthetic and pleasing, and I really do appreciate the homework that has been done about this intersection since April. I really do. However, it's still taller than it should be and will have more residential space and office space, and I think this intersection can handle. The medical office has been expanded, so there'll be more patients and more staff. Is there really an official guarantee that the parking for this staff will be in the Carepoint parking lot? Now, isn't it a parking, how this residential units, where will they park? They're going to take up residential parking spots on the streets. This property has previously had enough parking spots for its occupancy because it's a smaller building. But now there will be overflow into the street parking. And to the idea that needing parking isn't necessary, people have cars. This is the heights. It's not New York City. It's not downtown Jersey City. These aren't rentals. People that are able to buy these units, they will be able to have cars and they will need to park them. There is still the possibility of cars stopping in this intersection because of patients getting dropped off. And for residents who are parking in the garage, every time they try to enter, it'll lead to garage, they'll be navigating a dangerous intersection, including the crosswalk. They'll be stopping basically in intersection in order to pull into the garage. And when they do, cars will go around them. There is a long hole before the last stoplight, so cars are booking it down the streets.
I'm sorry, you just broke up there. Repeat that last part.
Sure. There is a long hole between last stoplight down the street and cars do. Drive really fast down the street and swerve around cars that try to stop for the crosswalk. Curve bumbers were brought up and. Please don't tell me that these will work because last week I was driving south. My husband and I were driving south on Palisade and we had to come to a full stop behind a parked car on Palisade. Because the driver went into Dunkin' Donuts. They were literally parked along the bumper, right in the middle of Palisade, stopping road traffic. Two minutes later, I was almost hit into the intersection that we're talking about because the car stopped for me to cross and another car swerved around. Not knowing that I was there and I was almost clipped, but because I actually jogged through this intersection because it's so nerve-wracking, I didn't get hit.
Thirty seconds.
Thing, who are in the flashing signs, I think this is a really loud and obnoxious. Way around a stoplight, you're going to have lights flashing into people's windows. Why would the city allow for a variance for a building like this? Why can't a floor be reduced for better for the neighborhood, bringing less traffic, car and pedestrian. Presence in this intersection and stop insinuating as a medical facility, it's could have ten stories. It's a residential building, ask for additional floors. Some money off the New York City View, mask from the request of one office. We have plenty of empty medical offices on the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Promoting Jonathan Glick.
So while Jonathan is coming up, I only see two more hands raised, Emily and Laura. So those are, that's going to be it for public comment, just Jonathan and then Emily and Laura.
Could you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address.
Jonathan Glick. Jonathan is J O N A T H A N. Glick. G as in George, L as in Larry, I C K. I live at one zero five South Street. Apartment three, zero seven three zero seven. I just want to speak to a couple of points. You know, initially upon seeing the design of this building, it does appear to be out of scope for this neighborhood. Yes, you took a lot of. Elements from surrounding buildings that was thoughtful. But in terms of the size, I do agree with the others. Speakers that it sets a precedence for that neighborhood. That just doesn't really fit. And I'd like to speak to. The comment by the chairman regarding the parking lot as a former employee of Carepoint at Christ Hospital. That is strictly an employee parking lot. And if you're not there. By nine AM, you're not parking there. It gets full very quickly. You know, as you can imagine, there's a lot of employees going in and out of that building. Throughout the day, so I'm not so sure. It doesn't seem like it's a guarantee that that would be an option for. The medical office staff.
So patients can't use that parking lot?
Patients do not use that parking lot. There, if you're facing the hospital. There is a parking deck. To the right of the hospital. Where patients and visitors can park. So that particular, that expansive lot is literally just for employees. The other point I'd like to make is that the traffic in that area, as the last speaker said, is. It's a little, you know, hairy sometimes and as a pedestrian. To add another element. Of potential danger in that neighborhood is. Just not, not appropriate.
One minute.
So, you know, at least from what I'm hearing. And from what I've been seeing, this just, this plan just doesn't seem to fit. And yes, I do agree that it also is a residential building disguised as a medical building. When there's, and I agree, there are plenty of medical buildings in that neighborhood that do not have tenants. Thank you.
Promoting Emily Lavelli.
Hello.
Hi, raise your right hand to be sworn, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And if you can state and spell your full name and provide your address.
My name is Emily Lavelli. It's E M I L Y Lavelli, L A V A L L E E. I'm at three eighty-eight Baldwin. I want to echo everything that our neighbors have said. I almost didn't come to this meeting because as far as I'm concerned, anytime a. Building that is going to make people money is presented to the zoning board. Regardless of the variances that are asked, it is approved. So I don't feel very confident that the things that I'm going to say are going to have much of an impact, but I hope that y'all can prove me wrong. I. I think it's embarrassing that there's so few low-income housing options in this or none as far as I'm hearing. It's embarrassing, I think. Did I say that? I'm looking for a new apartment now and I'm about to get priced out of this neighborhood. And. I am not, I'm in a lucky position compared to a lot of our neighbors. So in ten years, there's going to be buildings like this and a lot of our neighbors will not be able to live here. The second thing that I think is a horrible idea is a hundred percent lot coverage. There's historic flooding going on all over the country. It happens in Jersey City Heights. Just because we're on a hill does not mean. We are safe from floods. In August, we had a flood in the Heights and every basement apartment got flooded on this block. And so to have a hundred percent lot coverage when the building directly to the left, if you're facing this lot, the building directly to the left is set back. At least ten feet and tree-lined. It just. This building does not provide any benefit to the neighborhood. That makes it deserving of the variances that are being asked for. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, except for the insinuation that that will approve anything.
Promoting Laura Robertson.
Hello. Could you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. State and spell your full name for the record and provide your address, please.
Laura Robertson, L A U R A. R O B E R T S O N. Forty Beacon Avenue, apartment seven, Jersey City, New Jersey, zero seven three zero six.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. So I'm the Democratic Committee person for Ward C sixteen. And I'm here to tell you what my neighbors have told me, that we're against the building and its current. And its current form for two major reasons. Number one is because there's not enough moderate income housing. And second is because of the traffic and pedestrian bicyclist safety concerns. I've lived in this neighborhood for about ten years and I see as a pedestrian and as a bicyclist every day somebody almost getting run over. And yes, we put these bumpers on the corners and what happens? People park in front of them like somebody mentioned to Dunkin' Donuts. Or what they did on the corner of Palisade where the drugstore is, is they've just run over them. People just literally run over them. They do no good at all. You can have the driveway as long as you want it to be. People are going to be coming in and out and just because there's room between where the people come out of the driveway and the actual street. They're going to still stop on the sidewalk to look because people always pull up. In an ideal world, they would stay back, but that's not how things work. Also, if you look at Christ Hospital, there's lots of parking there, but when people are coming in and out, it causes traffic problems. Buses are coming up and down that street. You've got students after classes are out that come up and down that street. It's too dangerous for pedestrians already and it's too dangerous for bicyclists. And myself and our neighbors are against the project. Thank you very much.
And Chairman, at this time, there are no other hands raised.
Oh, sorry, I was muted. Okay. Does anyone have any questions at this point? Want to wait for staff? Or does, I mean. Chuck, do you want to respond to any of the comments that were raised?
Yeah, if I could, just just address some generally. You know, first, I don't think that this is going to set any precedent as Mr. Height said earlier, this is a. A unique property in that it's larger than than the smaller lots. It's about sixty-six hundred square feet. So you have these smaller lots along Palisade in the medical district and you also have these larger, much larger lots in the medical district that are owned by Carepoint and others. So. You're not, you know, and every, every application stands on its own as this board knows.
Sorry, you're biking up there, Chuck, a little. So you're not, what was that?
You're not, you're not going to be setting precedent here. Because you're. And every application stands on its own. Did you hear beforehand? Did everybody hear what I was saying or no?
I did.
I did.
Yes, we did, yes. All right, well, let me just then, so, anyway, I don't think, you know, precedent is the issue here. I think it's an appropriate lot because of its size and how it fits in. And, you know, we talked about, you know, the residential uses. And I know it's not a senior housing and we're not doing that, but. But you do have the residential uses in the immediate area. As the public said, you have, you know, one and two family homes on the western side of Palisade Avenue. So. This is a balanced project that, you know, Mr. Height, you know, was referring to because. You're not looking for a maximum bulk with ten stories with any, any of the permitted uses here. We think that probably would be inappropriate here. And it does have. Does fit in with the other residential uses there while also providing for the medical and office uses that are permitted by, by the medical district. And I also note that we are proposing two moderate income affordable housing units. That was. That component was always part of the application and I note that this application was not, is not subject to the inclusionary zoning ordinance because it was, at the time it was filed. That was not a requirement, but my client always had that in the application and that's twelve percent of the units, which is actually more. Than what would be required under the I Z O. And then I just, you wanted to point out, as far as the lot coverage, it's not a hundred percent lot coverage. It was in April. But now we've reduced it to eighty-five percent. Coverage and we also, as Mr. Vandemark pointed out, you have extensive green roof, which will. You'll address stormwater and we have onsite detention here too. So that, you know, the project addresses those issues or we believe it addresses those issues. And I guess that's, I think in my notes, I think those are the ones that I wanted to address.
Thank you. Does the board, you want to hear from the staff first? I mean, clearly we heard from the community. No one from the community is in support of this. It sounds like you guys have talked to them. I mean, I don't know what people think. They seem to raise a lot of good points about. Size and I think it's interesting. This is a medical zone. I'd be interested to hear from staff on that point in terms of. You know, this is, this is some medical use, but also a good amount of residential use in this zone. What, you know? What do we normally do in that situation?
And, and. No, and Josh, during, you know, the review of the first application. Where basically things were kind of sent back to the drawing board, you know? It is true that it had been a hundred percent. Coverage and at least there has been a more thoughtful traffic issue review. But the issue that I still. Kind of need some, some help on is that it seems like. The density of this project is riding on the coattails of. The medical district zoning. And I, it just doesn't make any sense to me. But, but I think we also kind of have to put things in context and try to get an understanding of what. We're going to expect to see coming down the pike with, with the new master plan. And maybe staff can shed some, some light on that, but. You know. There, there are three, three units. And that's, you know, that are, you know, more affordable income, which kind of, at least that's something that, that's helpful, but. It's still eighty-five percent lot coverage. And it's also. Very valuable property just in terms of the view. You know, and I, I just really wish that kind of. The overarching zoning, zoning issues had been worked through in the master plan. So everybody would have a better idea of what to expect.
I agree with Kate and these, these were some of the issues that were discussed and spoken about the first time they brought it before us. About being in the medical zone and so much residential, so many residential units.
Who is the planner here? Is it Francisco who's going to? So Lindsay was the original. We were reviewed. I can actually pull up and share her. Staff report as I briefly read some expert excerpts.
And Francisco, and I don't know if. Tanya or Mallory could answer this. In addition, I mean, I guess I don't know enough about the medical zone. Like, I know enough to know that having medical offices at these facilities is not a positive criteria, whereas in other places I might consider that. Here, like, you should have medical offices. Can I also have residential zones and is having residential property? It's having residential property in a medical property like. Viewed poorly because it's a misuse of the property or is it expected that these are mixed-use? Medical and residential.
No, are you asking whether or not medical is a resident rental? I, I'm confused. Are you asking residential is not a permitted use? What? Sorry.
Is, yeah, so this, this is zoned medical, right? What does that mean? What's, what's allowed in this zone, like, as of right?
So, um, in the medical, besides obviously medical offices, um, I'm just going to read through the list, so the answer is clear. Um, hospital, medical offices, ambulatory care facilities, you know, it's very similar. Offices, diagnostic centers, rehab centers, assisted living residences, nursing homes, senior housing, and public utilities. Um, so in a sense, residential is a permitted use, but in the form of nursing, senior home, or assisted living.
Got it. Okay. And that's a very different type of use.
Yes.
Okay. So these, these look beautiful. Maybe, maybe they could be some really, uh, some really bougie, uh, assisted living housing. Otherwise, I don't see it. But I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, to cut you off. Whatever else you guys want to say in.
Oh, I, I wasn't sure if you had other questions about the zone would permit or was the zone permits or not?
That was my main question. Does it, does it think, does it think of mixed use with residential or not? It doesn't, and it sounds like no unless it's targeted for this type of use.
Correct.
Anything else, Francisco, that we, we should be thinking about?
Yeah, I mean, I can briefly read. Let me actually share it as well. All right. Okay, so can everyone see the screen? All right, I'm going to go down to staff comments and briefly just touch upon, certain portions. So, uh, there is no density. I'm going to highlight it as well. There is no density or bulk standards for residential uses in this zone. However, recognizing that the subject property is located across from the R one zone, the proposed project includes multiple stepbacks in front of, in front, and I believe in rear of the building as they, as they currently showed. Um, another interesting thing was additionally, the existing use of the site is, is a multi, was a multifamily building. I believe it's currently demolished, um, but it also contained a surface parking lot rather than a permitted use for the zone. And then, um, I believe this also sort of answers your question. The purpose of the medical zone is to recognize the existing medical facilities in the city and other medical-related uses traditionally associated with these facilities. Um, so those are sort of the two or three points I wanted to touch upon.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone have questions for staff or for applicants experts? I mean, I think, I honestly, I think the community did a really good job focusing on, on some of the, like, clear issues here, which are, um, this seems like an unsafe, uh, traffic situation, like, already. Um, and we're going to put more cars, uh, and, and have an unloading zone in a potentially an intersection. Um, the, the community, you know, does not feel satisfied that the place that this has appropriate height. Uh, and, uh, I, I mean, it's asking us a lot, asking a lot, uh, to, to give, uh, residential here, um, when I don't think that's an approved use unless, unless we, we, you know, say that there's reasonable need for a variance here. Um, and I, I don't think putting in luxury housing is, is a great rationale for that.
Are we at that point in time where somebody makes a motion?
If nobody has any questions, does, uh, does anyone want to make a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion. Um, I make a motion to, uh, uh, to not approve, uh, the application for, uh, two sixteen Palisade Avenue. The applicant is two fourteen to two sixteen Palisade Avenue. Well, LLC case number Z two zero dash one hundred.
For a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, on a motion to not approve, can you tell?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
We're on mute, Lenora.
Oh, yeah.
And to, should, should we just clarify, because this is, you know, odd, that if you are voting yes, then you're voting to disapprove the application. If you're voting no, then you're, you, you would, uh, possibly approve the application.
I think you raised a phrase that was, okay, it's a motion to deny the.
It's a motion to deny the application.
Oh, yes, to deny it.
So yes means I'm denying, then my vote is yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Silva?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
No.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Donnelly?
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Six. Six in favor, one opposed.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, Chairman?
You want to take a break?
Well, Bridget might need one, and, and, uh, I can't see Bridget now. Where, where'd she go? There she is.
Bridget, do you want to take a break? There's, uh, two.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
And just, uh, Mr. Josh, uh, Ahmed has joined.
I was going to say that, yeah.
That means somebody can, assuming Ahmed wants to stay, somebody could leave if they want to, since we have eight now.
Oh, you want me to leave?
No, 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 I, I didn't need to quit.
I don't want anybody to leave. I just want.
I don't mind leaving.
If somebody wants to leave, fine, but I, I enjoy, I enjoy the show.
Okay, so what do you do? Will you stay in or you go? Because I don't mind leaving.
Ahmed wants to stay.
He's staying either way. He wants to be an observer.
You could go.
Then I'm out. I'm an extra, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, seeing you, Lenora. Good night. Good night.
Lenora, right. Okay, so Bridget, you just have on the record that Commissioner Brown has, has left the meeting. Um, Commissioner Shadid, uh, is here and will be voting going forward.
So now I can say hello to everybody.
Hello, hello, goodbye.
Okay.
We'll see everyone in five minutes.
Okay.
Okay, at nine? Okay.
Okay. Sorry, I heard Bridget.
Coffee.
Sorry.
No, no, I heard saying, uh, recording in progress. Um, so apologies, I just, uh, made myself a salad, so I have some. Are we?
We're ready to go.
Everyone's back, okay?
Yes.
Um, so great, we are, um, back on the record. Um, where did I put? Okay, and we are proceeding with case, uh, two, uh, Z twenty-one dash zero twenty-one. Um, the address is forty-six Congress Street.
We need Mr. Weinberg.
Voting Robert Weinberg. He's declining.
Sorry. Well, that makes things easy.
Okay, he's joining.
Sorry. Can you see, can you hear me? Oh, I see.
I think, I think Charles has his hand up. Charles Height.
Voting.
I see my name, and I see I'm on the top line between Commissioner Silver and, uh, Mr. La Paulia. See me?
Yes, but we don't see you, Mr. Weinberg. You gotta turn your camera on. While you're doing that, why don't we say that we, we've looked at your notices, your affidavit, proof of service, notice of publication, and Bridget will mark that as A one for this application.
Okay. Excuse me, this will be A one for this application in evidence.
To turn your video on, Robert, it should be next to the mute button. It should say start video. All you have to do is click it.
We're trying.
Uh, uh, okay, got it, got it. There you go.
Ah, gonna say, that's not Robert.
That's my, that's my technical staff. Sometimes she masquerades as my wife, but we know what she's really around for. So we've, uh.
We've marked your notices, so you're ready to go.
We'll get started. I'm Robert Weinberg, and I'm the attorney for the applicant, Judge Realty. And what we're seeking tonight, kind of subdivision approval, a use variance, and some bulk variances. What we're trying to get approval for is to put up a three-story building, which will have a commercial use on the first floor, and a whole-floor apartment on the second floor, and a whole-floor apartment on the third floor, for two total, two units. I have two expert witnesses. I have Al Cabato, the architect. I have Charles Height, who will be my planning witness, and a couple of other hugs and ends. Um, it's just, I want to stipulate now that if this matter is approved, that the, um, applicant would abide by the staff report recommendations, especially as to the biological warning signal and warning light and verbal warning. One more thing, we did, I communicated with, let's see, Tom Weissman of the Rivian Neighborhood Association. Sent him the plans. I sent him the, uh, principal points. There was some dialogue back and forth by email between my office and him. And then there was a meeting with some principals of the client, applicant, and from Mike Weissman, I think we're going to have to discuss parking and curb cuts, but we're going to have to leave it to the board to use its best judgment as far as approving our applications concerned. I'd like at this point to call Al Cabato up, and testifiers or architects. Swear in.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And just state and spell your name for the record.
Sure, Raoul Cabato, last name is C A B A T O.
Thank you.
And we, well, we accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, let me share my screen. Can everybody see the drawings? Cool, right. Uh, the project is, uh, located on the northwest corner of Congress Street and New York Avenue in an R one zoning district. The existing lot is sixty-seven feet long along Congress Street and twenty-five feet wide. We are proposing the demolition of the existing two-and-a-half-story structure and constructing a new three-story, thirty-foot-high mixed-use structure with commercial use on the ground floor and separate dwelling units on the second and third floors. As you can see on the survey, uh, the existing building had encroachments onto the sidewalk. Uh, our proposal eliminates all encroachments to the public right of way. We are requesting variances for allowing the mixed use, providing a minimum side yard setback where three feet and a two-feet, uh, side, uh, side yard setbacks are required. Only a three-foot, one-inch setback is provided, providing a minimum rear yard setback where a minimum twenty-foot rear yard is required. No rear yard is provided. The maximum building coverage where sixty percent is permitted, eighty-eight percent is proposed, and the maximum lot coverage where eighty-five percent is permitted, eighty-eight percent is proposed. Going to the floor plans, um, we are proposing, uh, an eight-hundred fifty-three point four-two square foot cellar to be used for meters, storage, and utilities. On the first floor, a retail space, seven-hundred eighty-nine square feet in area is proposed. At this time, there are only, uh, there are no partitions indicated. There is no tenant at this point. Uh, only a handicap-accessible toilet is proposed in this space right now. Um, we are proposing, um, uh, residential units on, uh, the third, second and third floor on the second, and, um, they consist of three bedrooms and two full bathrooms with their own laundry facilities. Each unit shall be approximately one-thousand three-hundred fifty-eight square feet in area. The second-floor unit shall have a rear deck accessed by the master bedroom. The third-floor unit shall have, um, uh, exclusive use of the roof deck approximately four-hundred thirty-seven, thirty-one square feet in area. The remainder of the roof, approximately four-hundred seventy-seven square feet in area, shall have green roof elements consisting of self-draining plant trays. This system was selected for its ease of installation, reasonable cost, and easy maintenance. The modular nature of the system ensures that replacing parts become effortless. The benefits include stormwater management, reduction of the heat island effect, reduction of energy usage, noise reduction, in addition to the visual and aesthetic benefits. Um, we propose to, uh, clad the front facade primarily with gray brick and gray fiber cement siding. Uh, we have samples on sheet A two zero one. The windows and doors shall have a white finish. The proposed corner shall be fiberglass with a white finish. Uh, as stated, the, the material finishes, um, samples are on sheet A two zero one. Finally, I would like also to point out that we are proposing the construction of, uh, the installation of three street trees along, uh, two along Congress and one on New York Avenue. Um, also, uh, we are proposing an electric, uh, vehicle charging station for public use on two designated parking spaces directly in front of the proposed building. Um, that concludes my presentation.
I have no questions. I think it would be best if we, um, call our planning, our planner, and then have questions if that's up to the board.
That sounds great, and, and Mr. Height was, uh, already sworn in and qualified, uh, earlier today.
Right, well, thank you, Charles, if you would.
Yes, still under oath. Um, thank you, everyone. Uh, so we do have, um, a, a nice project here. Um, we are at the, the corner of, uh, Congress in New York. Um, originally, we contemplated other types of development here. Um, uh, solely residential, two units, um, with, with, um, a curb cut. Um, but we felt that being at this intersection where there, there are other mixed-use, um, structures, very similar to what we're proposing before you tonight, that adding in another mixed-use, uh, three-story structure would actually help, um, solidify the, the intersection um, in terms of, of an balanced commercial use on the ground floor and then only two units above. So, um, really, the additional intensity with that commercial unit, we think, is an appropriate, um, component here in, in, at this intersection. Um, we are requesting a use variance, uh, mainly for a mixed use. Uh, as I mentioned before, two units would be permitted on this property. Um, so really, it's that commercial component. Um, we think it's compatible, um, being the intersection here, it will add to a mix of, of commercial uses in the neighborhood. Um, and there are other mixed-use properties in this building and along this, this section. And there are other mixed-use properties in this building and along this, this section of, of Congress in, in New York. Um, when we are looking at the ground floor, another component is the off-street parking. Um, this did come up with some of the discussions with the neighborhood. Um, candidly, we think there's a benefit, uh, given the size of these units, uh, three bedrooms that likely, um, families, uh, a, a family would, um, locate in the future in one of these units. Um, and the, every chance you get to increase the household size, the more likely that, um, vehicle ownership increases as well. It's not a given. Uh, there are families who don't own vehicles. I'm, I'm not making a blanket statement, but statistically, uh, automobile ownership does increase with the increase in household size. Um, so in effort to balance that, we are locating the two off-street parking, um, parking spaces. Uh, one would be for, uh, each use, um, as, as I understand it. Um, but if, if one family did not need a parking space and another tenant, um, did need two parking spaces, that might be negotiable as well. Um, the access to and from the site, we had discussed with the city planning. Um, that's what, what was referenced in her comment letter to improve, um, the safety, uh, for pedestrians, um, given the, the proposed curb cut. Um, we are looking to comply with that requirement by providing the warning, warning system um, in terms of the audio and light warnings. So I think that was, was an appropriate, um, addition there. Um, we also did discuss how to balance the, uh, what would be basically the removal of one on-street parking space. And i- it's a little difficult because I'm sure this board is looking at this application with respect to parking as one loss of on-street parking and two, uh, units of off-street parking gained. It's not a tremendous benefit to the community. Um, so with respect to parking, what we have discussed and what you saw on the plans is, um, a, I think, a really timely, uh, benefit to the community. In fact, we are proposing an on-street electrical vehicle charging station that will be benefiting two parking spaces. Um, in other locations in the city, you see this on First Street and some of the, the downtown areas. Uh, it's very rare that you are providing a public on-street charging station. It's a requirement for larger facilities within their parking decks, but those aren't all the time publicly accessible. These will be publicly accessible, and I think that's where I'm able to, um, present to this board that it is truly a, a public benefit that I see outweighing, um, the need for the, the curb cut being introduced. Uh, as was mentioned earlier, we're all, we are also making improvements with respect to the streetscape by adding the, the three tree, street trees. Um, in which, in which case is, is an improvement over the current conditions. Um, we also, Mr. Cabato did mention that, um, the existing home sits on, essentially, uh, well, the, the existing home, the prior home has been demolished, but, um, there's an existing wall, um, that, that does have, uh, encroachments into the right-of-way that will be rectified, um, and established in an appropriate sidewalk with, uh, along the front, two frontages of the property. Um, so those are some of the smaller, um, or, or use-related issues as we saw. We do have, uh, bulk, uh, variances that we're requesting that are subsumed with the use variance. Um, this is a corner property, so again, we're trying to balance a zero-foot front yard setback. That's for the commercial use. It's a, a common, um, active commercial use setback for the front yard. Um, opposing that front yard, we are proposing a zero-foot, uh, setback at the ground floor, but because of the, uh, upper floors with windows, we're providing that relief in terms of a five-foot setback on the upper floors, which, which is a standard, um, standard setback to provide for light and air and also fire, um, in the event of an emergency. Um, again, building coverage, lock coverage, um, it's being proposed at eighty-eight percent. Um, so I, I, um, yeah, eighty, eighty-eight percent, uh, where eighty-five percent's permitted, so we're only three percent greater. And again, um, that's really just the product of providing the ground floor commercial use, appropriate space for the parking, and then the layouts being a three-unit, three-unit layouts. Um, as I mentioned earlier, the last, uh, variance relief with this application is the, uh, width of the garage door, uh, being proposed at sixteen feet where only ten feet's permitted. Um, we are tapering this driveway to accommodate, uh, a, a smaller footprint in terms of the curb cut. Um, but as you get to the driveway, we're proposing sixteen feet wide, so we have two tandem spaces that can operate, um, independently, uh, for, for access for the, for the future vehicles. Um, so really, that's the, the relief as, as I see it in terms of, of how we're proposing. Uh, again, a, a use variance, a mixed-use building, the, the site's in appropriate location, being a corner lot. Um, the, where we're two units of residential over the ground floor commercial space, um, which is the, uh, an appropriate intensity, in my opinion, given two units are permitted in, in this district in the R1. Um, in terms of, uh, per, furthering purposes of the MLUL, um, given those special reasons, again, I, I, the, the two units is an appropriate population density for this area. Um, the introduction of the, um, commercial space will provide for, uh, a balance, uh, and variety of land uses. Again, that's a consistent type of land use in this neighborhood, so I think it furthers that purpose as well. Um, so that, that's some of the special reasons. And again, the, uh, the new design, um, does have some brick, uh, does have some of the cornice elements that you might find in the neighborhood. Um, it's not an ultra-modern building. Um, it does fit, in, in my opinion, um, with the neighborhood, and I think that furthers purpose, I, um, to create a desirable visual environment. As you get into the negative criteria, um, the first prong, um, with respect to no substantial detriment to the public good or public welfare. Um, you, from a building standpoint, the building mass, I don't believe there's any impairment where it's a three-story structure. So, um, within the, the intent of the R1 district, um, there's provision of light and air with the, with the setbacks that are being proposed. Um, a commercial use is appropriate at this intersection. Um, with respect to the proposed off-street parking, again, I, I kind of addressed that in my positive criteria as to how we were able to mitigate some of the potential impacts. Um, we're providing that warning system, both audio and visual, uh, and then also the introduction of the on-street charging station, which is a, a community benefit. As we look at the second prong of the, the negative criteria, no substantial impairments of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. Um, we're, we're in, in the R1, which is traditionally just residential. Um, as I mentioned, two units would be permitted on this property as a right. Um, what we're advocating for is that commercial ground floor unit, um, just across the street at this intersection. There's a mixed-use building, um, and there are other commercial, uh, uses within the neighborhood. Um, in these, in, in this two-block radius. So, um, it's a consistent use that's being proposed. There's no impairment, in my opinion, of the zone plan or zoning ordinance, and we think it's a nice fit. Um, that's really my direct testimony. Um, I don't know if I have anything else to add, um, from my notes, so I think that's it.
Thank you. Now, if we want to ask, uh, questions?
Question? Just, Mr. Height, or, or the team. Uh, in this climate of uncertain fuel prices, is the charging stations are very nice, but if their damage has stopped working, who repairs them?
Great question. Um, I, I have to actually give all the, the benefit to, uh, the, the Jersey City Summit that happened a, a month or two ago. Um, there was a rep who installed, had the installations in the two other locations. Um, the, the installer and owner of this equipment services the equipment through the life of the equipment. They negotiate with the property owner and the utility provider, in this case being PSCNG, that service agreement, and they share in the profits of the electricity that's being sold. So it's metered, and it's, it's, it's direct access. It's stuff that, it's not free electricity. You still pay for it, but that, that would be the answer to your question.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, is, is there a, um, a drawing or schematic or something that who shows the building with the different colors? I mean, everything I have on my screen that I have is all in black and white. Is there? I know there's a whole thing across the bottom that shows the Anderson window and the James Hardy, but any photos of the building in color, uh, what you're planning on? I, you're on.
You're on, you're on mute, Row.
I'm sorry. Uh, unfortunately, no, we, we do not have a, a, a color rendering of the elevation.
Well, can you describe visually? Maybe that would be helpful.
Sure. So, um, basically, it comes down to two materials. There's going to be, uh, a, a gray brick and a gray, um, fiber cement siding on the, on the, uh, this is the, um,
So this isn't, this isn't in black and white?
Yeah.
This is the color.
The, the, the colors would be the gray Hardy and then the dark brick. Um, and then, once again, the, the windows would be white along with the, the cornice, which would be a fiberglass. And that would go to the, it would be the same finishes for the, uh, New York Avenue side. Once again, the gray brick and the gray, um, fiber cement siding.
Thank you. Catherine, is that helpful?
Yes, thank.
Any other questions before we open up to the public? Francisco, can you please, uh, see if there's anyone from the public that has any, uh, questions?
So, Karen, oh, I'm promoting Cynthia Chris.
Hi, please raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And if you could state and spell your full name and provide your address?
My name is Cynthia Chris, C.Y.N.T.H.I.A. My last name is spelled C.H.R.I.S. And I live at three-twenty-and-a-half Webster Avenue.
Thank you.
Um, I'm, uh, a neighbor. I, I live about a block and a half from, um, this location. I've lived here for, uh, about almost four years. I'm also a member of the Riverview Neighborhood Association. Um, you know, I think there, we're seeing a lot that's really nice about this project, the street trees, the charging station, and so on. Um, it is, as has been said, although the proposal says that this is a proposal to begin with demolishing, it's already been demolished, right? So that part is, that part's, that, that cat's out of the bag, right? Um, I think that the main objection of, um, folks in River V Neighborhood Association, um, that I've spoken to, uh, that I've spoken with in that capacity is the proposed curb cut in the garage. And I think that the issue with that is really a safety one. So this curb cut would allow a two-car garage where you would, uh, the, the cars would enter sort of in the same lane, and then either by veering right or veering left, there, they, the design calls for there to be room for two cars. So to leave the parking lot, the garage, one would back out, but not just back out straight, but back out in an angle, one way or the other, right? And I think that that raises a lot of concerns for this block. Um, in, um, you know, this Congress Street is surprisingly narrow, given its function. Um, as I'm sure most of you know, the eighty-five bus that goes from, uh, Hoboken all the way to the American Dream Mall, um, goes up and down the street several times a day. The one-nineteen that goes, uh, to New York City goes on this block. It's recently begun using the, uh, double-length articulated buses, so we've got great big buses running, uh, dozens of times a day up the block. Also, right across from this lot on the north, uh, southeast corner is a pretty large fire station. And I live close enough that I can hear numerous times a day that they leave with the sirens on, and they frequently come up and then return back on Congress. There's a daycare center on the northeast corner, right across from this lot. So several times a day, you've got, uh, heavy stroller traffic. Um, then there are multiple daycare centers within a block or two in, in various directions. So you've got strollers, you've got buses, you've got fire trucks. Uh, Congress is not a street that's, that has bike lanes. In fact, I don't think it's, it'd be great, but it, it's not really wide enough unless we really ate all the public parking on it. And so you often see on this street bikes and electric bikes resort to using the sidewalk, right? Which is not great for pedestrians. It's not great for, uh, people pushing strollers out of those daycares. But I, I'm, what I'm trying to talk about is both a very congested and trafficky street and very congested and trafficky sidewalks at certain times of the day. I'm concerned about the backing out. Um, you know, like I said, I've lived here, uh, somewhat over three years, and that time I've seen three, I've witnessed, uh, at least three pretty good accidents, um, within a half a block of this site. One pretty much demolished the, um, parklet, outdoor seating in front of the cliff, a half a block to the east, the, in front of the restaurant. Um, another, um, was a collision, um, a, again, about a third of a block from this site between a fire truck and a very large pickup truck that ended up on the sidewalk. Um, another one, um, two vehicles that, uh, ended up partially on the sidewalk, um, on Congress Street on this block.
One minute.
Okay. Um, if you want to see how people drive and how people park on the street, how they double park, even though there's really so far very little commercial, right? There's Lee's Liquors, um, basically is right across the street. Um, then take a look at the bollards that are on all four corners, the fire station, the daycare center, Lee's Liquors, and this lot. Um, uh, bollards were put there a few years ago in order to, as people have noted in other cases tonight.
Thirty seconds.
Protect visibility for cars at that corner to make sure that you can see, the pedestrians can see cars coming. There, almost none of them are there. Delivery trucks for the liquor store park on top of them. Other people just run right over to park, to run into the liquor store, things like that. So again, you know, this corner, you know, uh, to me, that points to unsafe driving conditions, and I'd be very concerned about cars backing out when a one-nineteen articulated bus is coming down the street or when a fire truck with its, um, with its siren going is coming down the street as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Promoting Jonathan Glick.
And you've already been sworn in tonight, Mr. Glick, so if you could just state your name for the record and your address?
Sure, Jonathan Glick, uh, one-oh-five South Street, apartment three, zero-seven-three-zero-seven. Uh, I'm only a few blocks from this location, but, uh, I'm actually here, uh, speaking on behalf of the River View Neighbor Association's, uh, Development Committee. I'm on the board of the Neighborhood Association and also on the Development Committee. Uh, so following our review of the proposed plans for forty-six Congress Street, we, uh, notified the owner's attorney, Mr. Weinberg, that we could not support this project. In our notification to Mr. Weinberg, we identified two serious concerns about the configuration of the proposed off-street parking. First, the required curb cut would eliminate three of the five, uh, parking spaces on the north side of this block. Uh, not the one that was stated earlier. Um, it would take, especially with the electric, uh, charging stations, it would take away even more. So this would worsen an already severe parking shortage in the neighborhood. Uh, contrary to the applicant's claim, uh, there is not ample parking, uh, on the street in the neighborhood. Typically, all-street parking is occupied, you know, by six, seven PM during the week. Uh, the city has recognized this shortage and, uh, expanding zone parking permits, and the enforcement has increased uh, for people without permits. Uh, and secondly, the proposed garage location would, uh, like Cynthia was saying, would require, uh, vehicles to back out into traffic on Congress Street, uh, and it creates a significant safety hazard uh, to pedestrians, including, uh, all the families and children going to the daycare across the street. to pedestrians, including all the families and children going to the daycare across the street. Would also create unnecessary congestion on Congress Street. And the numbers are about a hundred and sixty-eight New Jersey transit buses pass through there every day.
One minute.
And then finally, it has come to our attention that the Planning Board has submitted zoning plans to the City Council that would not allow curb cuts as part of proposed zoning changes. But regardless of that outcome, we want to ensure the safety of our community, which would be compromised if a curb cut is allowed on this property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, there are coming no other hands raised at this time?
Thank you. Mr. Weinberg, do you want to respond to any of the public comments?
Well, I would say the fact that there are accidents that are relevant to the fact that people double park is illegal. And I mean, you can't, what, what can you say? Not a situation like the last one we talked, that you had before you, where you had a big building, it was coming in and out all day. This two apartments faces off-street, one to each residential unit. People can back up a car. You're not talking about, you're talking about, you're gonna have a warning system. You're gonna hit the curb and then you hit the street. Not a long distance. And it's certainly not creating a dangerous condition for anybody reasonably careful in the way they walk and how they walk. I would say that, that's, that's my, those are my comments.
Mr. Weinberg, if I, if I could also add, I understand the truck routes. This is a regulated neighborhood in terms of traffic flow. The immediate intersection is a four-way stop. This is not a highway. This is not a continuous route. Also, Webster and Congress is a, is a signalized intersection. So when you have a signalized intersection, you do have brakes and traffic. Just for the board's benefit, you know, the two trips would be able to function, given the, the kind of regulation on, on the vehicle flow in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Say, anyone have questions before we get here from staff? Okay. Then let's hear from staff.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen real quick, just to cover some points in the staff report.
And Mallory, could you, I guess the question I have, I'd be interested in your viewpoint. Given this location in, as two units, did you think they should have a garage with two cars? Or would you have said maybe?
No, so in the initial review of this, sorry, I'm getting a little bit of an echo. I don't know if somebody's got multiple devices going. But in the initial review of the application, we did communicate that we didn't think that the parking was an integral part of the project. You know, they are proposing a compliant curb cut. We did work with them to reduce the garage situation from what was originally proposed. So it has been reduced in, in impact, but we, you know, we were very clear that we just didn't think that, you know, we have plenty of two-family buildings throughout the city that don't have parking. And so I don't think it's a burden on the community to, you know, to have a couple more cars added on the street here. They did communicate that they wish to pursue the curb cut and the parking as part of the application. So that is where we came in with, you know, the at minimum to mitigate the, the condition to put a condition of approval in the staff report that would require a warning system, both verbal voice system and a light system to warn people when the garage door was opening and a car was entering or exiting. But I don't think it's, it's, like I said, I don't think it's an integral part of the project. I don't think it's going to, you know, pose a serious detriment to not, to not have parking as part of the project. At the same time, it is only two cars coming in and out. We're not seeing, you know, seventeen, eighteen cars coming in. It's not going to be a high-traffic curb cut. So, you know, I'm not going to say that it's, it's a major concern for us, but it's also just not necessary. But moving on, and if you guys have any other questions about the curb cut, you know, I'll talk about the, the conditions of approval and we can discuss further. But to start off, I just want to get a little bit into the D-one use variance. So I think Charles kind of spoke to the positive criteria. I do think that this is a unique property and that it is the corner property. And the opposite two corners across both Congress corridor and New York ad corridor are in the restaurant overlay zone, which permits ground floor commercial spaces. So you will see on the next block on Congress Street, almost entirely, that block has ground floor commercial. Similarly, there's a longstanding liquor store across the street with residences above. So this is a very compatible use variance. So it's kind of this, this little corner was actually just kind of left out of that overlay zone. So I don't think there's any detriment to that, that space, that ground floor commercial space going in. Similarly, we talked about kind of some changes that were recommended as part of the master plan that was adopted earlier this year. We did bring a first round of zoning changes to the Planning Board just this week. So the Planning Board did recommend to move forward with those changes. They are not zoning yet. They still have to get their way through City Council. But part of those recommendations were actually to change the zoning along the Congress Street corridor to be a neighborhood center, a small-scale neighborhood center, which would permit four or five stories, depending on the lot, with ground floor commercial as a permitted use. So I do think this is very much in line with the recommendations of the master plan as well. So I do think that they meet the positive criteria, though the zoning just kind of hasn't caught up. We're in a little bit of a weird limbo right now. In terms of the rear-guard setback, again, this is a corner property configuration and urban planning and design principles really call for the continuation of the street wall. So not providing a full rear-guard setback on this property, I think, is consistent with us wanting, you know, aesthetically pleasing and more urban context, street wall environment for the pedestrians. Similarly, moving towards the, the rear and the, and the adjacent property that this backs up to, that property, that structure is set back about eight feet from the shared property line. And the upper floors of this project, you have an additional five-foot step back. So there'll be about a thirteen-foot step back between the structures on the upper floors. So, which is more than enough space for light and air for existing windows and proposed windows. So we don't see any detriment there. In terms of lot and building coverage, I think they kind of go hand in hand with the undersized nature of the lot. So this is only a sixteen hundred seventy-five square foot lot. Whereas the zone calls for a twenty-five hundred square foot lot. And the structure as proposed is very consistent with the R-one bulk. So meaning if you took this exact structure that's proposed before you today, even though there are lot and building coverage variances, if you put it on a conforming twenty-five hundred square foot lot, it would be a compliant bulk. So they're not asking for, you know, it's not an egregious bulk that they're asking for. They're asking for the bulk of the zone contemplates. They just have an undersized lot. So they're exceeding the limitations that the zone calls for. They are, also are proposing significant green roof and have some permeable pavers on their side yard step back. So that actually more than doubles what would be provided as a permeable area in the rear yard if the coverage was met as the zoning contemplate. So I think the benefits outweigh the detriments in the situation. And then I think we've discussed the garage door with and what we've proposed to mitigate that. I, I hear the concerns of the neighborhood. I, you know, I would agree that I don't think the parking is a critical part of this project. You know, if the applicant wishes to proceed with, with the request or if the board has concerns, I think we should have that conversation. But other than that, if, if the board looks to make a motion, we have provided some conditions to address this, the safety and make sure that that doesn't become kind of a blind entry exit for the pedestrians that are crossing through. I think that concludes everything. If you guys have any other questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Matt, Mallory, thank you. This was actually just a really well-done report, in, in my view, because you touched on a, a number of issues. I mean, I, I think it's actually somewhat remarkable that the only negative comments about this, this project had, had to do with the, the curb cut.
We're making progress.
Yeah. No, no, I mean, there's, there's a lot to like about it in terms of, you know, I, I think that this would actually, the building design itself would match up well with, with the designs that, that you see on Congress Street. I also think in general, I, I know, I walk by that area all the time, that I, I think people want to see more commercial development along Congress Street to have more kind of neighborhood gathering places. And, and, and I think that that's also consistent with the, the, the master plan. So I think all of those, those things are good. Now, to Mr. Weinberg's point, I, I don't necessarily think that the, that the traffic of two cars is going to cause, you know, a disaster. But I do think that it is important to note that compared to a lot of other more residential streets, Congress doesn't have that, that many curb cuts, but it is just two cars. So I would have preferred to see this without the, the parking. But I could also be persuaded otherwise, because there's a lot that I like about the project.
Kate, I, I agree. I like everything about the project except the parking. And I guess I, so this is my feeling on, on the parking point is I agree with, with, with Mr. Weinberg's statement that it's, it's only two cars. It's not, it's not that big a deal. But what makes me think differently about it is how, how much we're, we're like accommodating for these two cars, which makes it so obvious that we don't think that this is a safe street and safe intersection. Like, who has whistles and, you know, this sound system? I mean, this is a ridiculous thing. And I think the clear answer, at least for me, unfortunately, is that it's not appropriate to have, have the parking here in any number of cars. Everything else about this is great. Use, use that space for more, more ground floor commercial. That's my view.
I agree.
So I don't know if anyone has questions or if anyone wants to make a motion to vote.
So, Mr. Chairman, do you think you want to make a motion, somebody make a motion to approve the project minus the parking?
If you guys were able to do that, I mean, that, those aren't the plans before us.
No, but.
I can, I can just say, if the board is comfortable, you know, I would be comfortable with, you know, if we were to clarify on the record right now that an approval would come with removing the parking, that they can work with us to just fit out the rest of that ground floor with, with either, you know, additional commercial or ancillary space for the building. I don't think that they would be introducing like a new use that hasn't been discussed here tonight, other than potentially maybe like an amenity for the residential units or something like that, which I don't think the board would see as a detriment, particularly over parking. So I would be comfortable, again, it's up to the board, but just adding a condition, if that's the motion that is made, that they can work with us for signature sets to make that adjustment.
I mean, I, I think unless anyone, that's fine with me. I don't know what other people on the board think. But I mean, this is Mr., Mr., sorry, this is Mr. Weinberg's application. I mean, if that's a critical component of the application, I don't want to amend it in a way that, that wouldn't be like, okay with the applicant.
I'd like to call, like, one of my clients and just get some correction from him, if that's okay. As far as the motion is concerned, eliminating the parking, we'll work, try to work something out.
I imagine you should talk to your client. How long would that take?
Maybe five minutes, maybe three minutes.
Okay.
I know he's waiting.
Okay.
Let me give him a call. I'm dialing as we speak. Just gonna go to another room.
I was really hoping to get a play-by-play.
You want a speaker phone on that?
I thought that's where we were going, where I'm dialing. We're now speaking.
You were close, Josh, to getting that.
I guess this is the growing pains of virtual meetings. It's not just a step aside and have a word with your client at the boardroom these days.
The other big negative, because Catherine would always know the color of the, the thing is, if we were given those, those yeah, yeah, I, I'm really disappointed people aren't shipping bricks to my.
I was, I was waiting for that in the beginning of the pandemic, just our office getting stacked up with like
Yeah. It made no sense to me, ever. Like, why did I need, like, the actual material?
Right.
Are we able to do anything? We can't start the last thing, right?
Want to memorialize some resolutions?
Yeah, let's, just get something, yeah.
Is that good? Bridge, wherever you are.
I'm here. I can't see with the stack and board up.
Okay, well, we have thirteen resolutions to memorialize, so maybe we could do that right now, real quick.
Awesome. We can get them all done.
First one, we heard this on February tenth. It's Cindy Line and Omar Fernandez. It was case Z twenty-one dash zero three four. It was an application for a C variance. President on February tenth was Chairman Jacobs, Commissioners Donley, Shadid, Arroyo, Patel and Green. That application passed six in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that? The next one was heard on March tenth.
Dave, before we get to it, Mr. Weinberg may already be ready.
Yes, good. Bob, you're on, you're on mute.
He may need his IT expert.
When you entered the room, you weren't on mute, so you pressed something.
Possibly your spacebar.
He didn't. I muted him because he was on the phone call.
Mystery voice.
Are you ready for me to?
And the answer is?
The answer is, we're gonna give up the parking.
There you go.
We'll work with Mallory as far as reconfiguring that space that would have been the garage. And I think, you know, if we get that boat, we'll look with it.
Well, somebody will have to make a motion and then we go that way, right?
Thank you.
Move to approve without the parking, without the garage.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, with conditions, and especially the condition of eliminating the parking in case Z twenty-one, oh twenty-one, dash oh twenty-one, forty-six Congress Street to approve that case.
Okay, so on a motion to prove with the conditions and changes as described.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Patel.
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Silva.
Yes.
Commissioner Donnelly.
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions. Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Weinberg.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the board.
Thank you, Mr. Weinberg.
Wowing their time, my witnesses, everybody did a great job and nothing seems like success. Thank you.
We thank your better half for being there, so.
Well, now I'm on the hook. Who knows what this is gonna cost me?
Dinner with every lease.
Good luck.
Thanks again, guys.
Thanks for working with us.
Thank you.
My pleasure is always.
The Z twenty-one dash zero seven two. The address is two zero three Danforth Avenue.
So before Mr. Burke comes on, we could say that this is, again, a notice. Case we have as affidavit, proof of service, notice of publication, and we'll mark that as A one. Bridget. Wherever you are.
Okay, I'm here.
Sorry, didn't see you there.
One moment. This will be A one in evidence for this application.
We have Jim Burke.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, thank you. The the hour is late. We hope to present a very concise and succinct. Application and then turn it over to the board. I'm James Burke. I'm representing the applicant. The application involves a nine unit, nine parking spot building. Two oh three Danforth Avenue. There is a D variance involved, so if the board approves this, it will require five favorable votes. There's three witnesses tonight. Richard Garber is the architect. Lee Klein is the engineer. And Catherine Gregory is our planner. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Garber.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Let me just state and spell your name for the record, please.
Richard Garber, G A R B E R.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Garber, you've appeared before this board a number of times. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I can go through.
Yes. No, we we accept Mr. Garber's qualification.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Garber, would you please present the the architectural design of this building and discuss the unit size and so forth? And and also the location, because it's an interesting location.
Sure. Can everyone see the presentation screen?
Yes.
Great, wonderful. And thank you, Mr. Burke. Thank you, Commissioners. I know the hour's late. This project is at two or three down Fourth Avenue. Down Fourth Avenue, as. Everyone knows is an increasingly important east-west corridor through the city and is one of the few uninterrupted corridors through the city. It is a. It is primarily in the R one. However, you will see per the presentation, some slides at the end. That the nature of buildings is actually quite mixed. And this site is is interesting for a number of reasons that I will go into. Briefly, we are proposing here. Just advance the slides. This is a rendering, a a three-story. Building containing nine units, nine parking. And we'll talk about the importance of parking actually on this site, which is a little different than than some of the arguments I've made before this board in the past. The site is on Danforth Avenue. It's a fifty by one hundred site. That is pictured here. So in the R one, you see it's it's quite a sea of R one, but as you see. Old Bergen kind of cuts through at a diagonal Bergen being a historic kind of almost like small retail street. And Ocean Ave is a little bit further down to our east. And the Boulevard is immediately west of us. And so we're in a position where there. There are a variety of building and housing specific types. And I will remind the board that we've been before this board with with a few projects in the last few years. In the vicinity of this project on adjacent blocks of Danforth. For similar and slightly larger actually sized product projects. Now, the reason why I I I consider this a. A unique lot is this is the the newest tax map. That you see before you here. Our lot is in red. And you'll see that the lot is actually a double width. It's a fifty by one hundred lot. It's currently vacant. I'll show you an image of that in a second. And you'll see that the lots begin closer to Old Bergen. As twenty-five by one hundred, but then as we move west, they begin fanning out so that there are some larger lot widths, right? So I would I would demonstrate through this slide that there is not a consistent. Twenty-five by one hundred R one. Lot size that exists on the block and we are certainly one of the the larger ones of fifty by one hundred. The other thing that I want to bring to your attention is you can see in the text on this on this slide. That we have a a utility track. Next to us, and that's a twenty-five by one hundred parcel. That is owned by Bell Atlantic and is used for the passage of utilities. It's a vacant lot. And. My understanding is that it will never be developed because of that, because it it allows for the underground passage of utility conduit and so forth. And you can see clearly that that lot at two oh five Danforth immediately adjacent to us is owned by Bell Atlantic New Jersey. Which counterintuitively exists in Addison, Texas, seven five zero zero one. The this is an image of the lot, so our site has the 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 current wooden fence around it. We're gonna get rid of that wooden fence. And you do see that there are immediately adjacent to us, a kind of typical two-family, but I'll show you in some aerials that again, the block is quite. You know, becomes becomes varied as you zoom out a little bit. The utility tract is actually immediately to the right of our lot, and it's this grass lot here. That is bound by this fence. Interestingly enough, and this was brought up in a previous conversation that I had recently about this. The lawn is always mowed on said utility track, which means that Bell Atlantic is actually maintaining the lot. And not really allowing for anything to occur on it because of the, as I suspect, the passage of those underground utilities. So we have a double a double wide lot and we have a lot immediately adjacent to us that precludes development. Which is which is some of the reasons why I think we're we're somewhat unique here. In terms of the zoning tabulation, as suggested, this is a proposed multifamily dwelling. And therefore, we do have the the D variance in the R one zone for use. And we also have a proposed lot, a deviation from five combined feet, five feet, one inch combined. To four feet in the side yard setback, and I'll show you why we're asking for that. That actually involves a pre-existing non-conforming condition. To our east. This is, as you can see here, proposed as nine units. We have done a fair amount of community outreach, and this was actually as early as. A year ago and a little bit before that in the summer. We met with. Councilperson Ridley twice once in a a kind of more private meeting where we just kind of shared our goals with her. At which she requested that the total unit count be under ten. I think there was an initial proposal of twelve. When we were just initially getting involved, that's been scaled down to nine. And that she would feel comfortable with one-to-one parking. Now, one-to-one parking, I know, is a little counterintuitive, given some of the mass transit goals of the city. But I think it is actually justified on on a block like this. And you'll see some some information why in the in the coming slides. Everything else is deviation free. There has been some recent communication with Ms. Marion, the planning director, about the parking. And I think we had a conversation the other day about that, and I'm gonna explain some of that conversation as well when I get to the the ground floor plan. In in terms of the building metrics, this is a three-story thirty-two-foot-tall building, so we are able to keep this, even though it's nine units to three stories. Which is consistent with the R one height requirements. As I said, we are proposing nine residential units. That would be one studio on the ground floor, and that studio exists on the ground floor to satisfy access requirements. I'll talk about that in a second. Two one bedrooms and sticks two bedrooms, so it's an integrated. Unit mix, and I think that this is also. Quite healthy on Danforth Avenue, because while while you'll see from the aerials, I'll show in a second, there is a a mix of building types here. In the R one zone, there are primarily two-family houses, and I think bringing. A variety of unit types like the two bedrooms, and this is a two-bedroom heavy product, is actually. You know, brings a diversity of housing options to to this part of town. I I feel that that's important. That studio unit serves as our ADA unit. I want to be clear about this. All of the units are ADA accessible. But in a three-story building without an elevator such as this one, there needs to be a ground floor accessible unit. And so we are designating the studio on the ground floor, four hundred sixty-two feet as such as that accessible unit. I'm in addition, the ground floor is. Made up of a two thousand two hundred thirty-five square foot parking garage. As well as some utility space. There's a trash room, laundry room, and utilities provided on that floor. And as I suggested before, nine parking spaces and keeping with the councilwoman's goals of one-to-one parking. Six standard spots, one requisite ADA spot and two compact spots. And so you see the site plan here. Now, the site plan is important for. Establishing the rationale for the. The modest deviation that we're asking for the side yard. We are at zero lot line on the west side, and the west side is the Bell Atlantic side, right? So that's in effect an easement. Actually, I shouldn't say easement. It's it's basically a utility tract is is what I want to call it to be more precise. And so we feel very comfortable building right up to our lot line there. We're proposing a four-foot setback on the east side. As opposed to two and three, we're just proposing one-four, and the reason why is, as you can see, that existing, that pre-existing structure there. Actually, has the main house, an addition from the main house, as well as an accessory structure. All on that. On our eastern there western lot line, and because of that, we've pulled our building back. Which creates an egress passage on that again, a line against that wall, and it also sets back from. Several, three or four. Pre-existing non-conforming lot line windows that are there. So this is a an absolutely appropriate. And and code. You know, code compliant way of treating that condition. The hollow triangle is the pedestrian entrance. The filled triangle is the vehicular entrance. And to zoom in a little bit more, we are proposing nine spaces. So what you see here is a modest lobby with utility. The laundry room as well as a dedicated trash room. Trash will only be brought out on days of collection, by the way. We have ample room to store for a nine-unit building inside the building. And then we have that small studio, the accessible unit, which is directly accessed through the lobby, no height change or anything like that. In terms of the parking layout, we have nine cars. Now, this is a a private garage. So, you know, we are more or less complying with, you know, best practice sort of standards, and we've we've checked this out. We do have a parking consultant lead line here as well tonight. And part of the reason why I had a conversation with the planning director was just to kind of better explain. How the the parking would work. Now, the specific concern was. Will cars be backing out onto Danforth Avenue? And the answer, and hopefully this is clear, is no, they will not be backing out. What we are doing is we are proposing a series of parallel spots here. Two and here, four. As well as a one-way drive aisle. And then three additional spots here. So that's how we get to nine, and cars can actually pull in and K-turn. So as to turn around in this area back here, which, you know, it may be a little bit more than one maneuver, but in general, it absolutely works. And it will be, I think, fairly smooth operation in terms of moving around, moving this around. We have agreed to add signage. Inside the garage to the effect of vehicles must face forward upon entry on upon exit, right? So they're both facing forward in and facing forward out. In other words, they're not backing their car in or backing their car out, and we'll make sure of that. And that's it. And and so I think it's it's a, you know, it's a a slightly tighter, but a but a fine solution. And again, maintaining that one-to-one relationship as dictated by our interaction with the councilperson. I will also point out that past the building line, which is where I have the mouse here, this is all pervious pavers. So this isn't one big like asphalt blacktop or something like that. We are doing. Pervious pavers that do have the structural ability to, you know, hold the weight of a car, just believe it or not, that not that heavy. That can be in the rear yard, and that's not going to cause any negative impact in terms of drainage and that kind of thing. In terms of our unit plans, you see them here. We have a a single stair, just because there's not a lot of occupants in in this building. This is leading code. And then we have a variety of of units, including the one bedrooms that face the front. And then we have two two bedrooms that have a little zigzag to make room for that that second bedroom in the rear. And again, this is about housing diversity in the R one on this lot that I think is a a special lot in some ways. We do have a series of. Circular stairs on the third floor to provide roof access for a partially private deck. So our rooftop actually has access to a front. Which could be an occupied roof and then private decks in the rear as well. And what we're really intending here is that we have these kinds of private decks here. We think that they'll make a really nice amenity. For for those units. Now, in terms of the. The the. Building materials themselves, as you can see here, I think you should be able to see from our material samples. We have a a knot wood battening system. Like a kind of linear system, which which kind of plays with the verticality of this building, because it's a little bit wider, given the width of the lot. And some, not all, some of the buildings on the block. As well as a bit of stucco fiber cement on the sides. And then some some aluminum plating up front. So we have the battens on the ground floor. We have some vertical siding here, and then you see we have a series of fixed windows and doors to make for some really nice glass. On the front of the building. Here's that garage door entry, and then we have lighting and so forth outside as well. I have a color elevation of this that I'll show you. The rear is fairly straightforward, just a kind of brick on the exterior here. We do have the driveway being open to air to provide natural ventilation. However, it will be fenced on all sides and then just stucco on. On the two upper floors of the building. Side elevation is fairly straightforward. We are wrapping the battening system and vertical siding on the front of the building. Some ways, as you can see. And then on the other side, this is the side where we have. This is the. The elevation where we're against the. The house, and then the other side is is a little bit, a little bit more blind, a little bit more straightforward, just because it's that utility side. Building section. Building section, three stories. I mentioned there isn't a kind of height deviation or variance, but looking for here, this lays out quite nicely as such. And here's a zoomed up section, so you see it a little closer with that stair. And then this is a some aerials that we thought we would provide that show the variety of structures and how they're situated. Where you see, as we get closer to Old Bergen, clearly some larger multi low, but larger multifamily low low buildings with flat roofs. Flat roofs continue. We have some pitch tooth families, some flat roofs, some more ornate buildings. Near ours, this is actually a building that is now gone, which is on our, this is actually the building that was on our site. Here's our tract of land. This building has been gone for some time. This is a little bit of an older older slide. And then that kind of variety continues until the end of the block where we have some taller four story type buildings on the boulevard. And so you just kind of see as you as you blur your eyes that this is really a sea of, you know, it's in the R one, so there are a lot of two family houses. But there's a lot of diversity here on the block. And and I think in addition to that diversity, my understanding is that Danforth Avenue really kind of does play an important role in some of the master plan initiatives as well being undertaken by the city. And this is what our building looks like in it. So when you blur your eyes, sure, we're a double width. But I don't, I don't really see this necessarily as as inappropriate, especially given some of the larger structures that we're beginning to highlight in red that exist around as well. And that said, I was just going to finish with a couple of very simple accent metrics. And that is are my presentation. So thank you.
Richard, I have one question for you. You mentioned a meeting with councilperson Ridley. Was there any other community outreach?
I mentioned two council, there so there were two meetings
Okay.
in particular. So there was one private meeting, as I said, with the councilwoman. And then that was followed up by a meeting she scheduled with stakeholders where we did the same presentation. That second meeting, I remember happened the first week of August in in twenty twenty one. So it was about a year ago. Took a year for us to get to this point. I had, I had corresponded with the councilwoman and and Jim, thank you for reminding me in the last two weeks, just to let her know that most recently that there are, there are no changes to the plan as she saw this and we were scheduled to be heard. And I asked her to contact me if she had any concerns and she didn't contact me, so I I trust there wasn't. I I reached out to her assistant as well to make sure. So I I don't think there are any concerns to my knowledge anyway.
Okay, thank you. My next witness will be Lee Klein, the traffic engineer.
Before we ask that, and I I know that this goes against what I what I always say. But the similar comment to kind of one I that we saw earlier today, like right across from this, there's, there's a series of houses that have these like cornices or or stuff on the roof. And like in particular, across the street, kind of this like red and green structure with a porch. I mean, was there any consideration about bringing color palette or architectural elements that would in a modern way be somewhat complimentary of of some of the things that were were present on the block?
So I I would say that, I mean, yes, Commissioner, I think we always try to do that. I mean, I I I do feel strongly, as you probably suspect, that, you know, I I don't feel it's appropriate to recreate things that look old. We are trying to be somewhat playful and you can see here with a kind of vertical siding material that is a little heavier when you blur your blur your eyes, which is consistent with, say, the brick that we see on a lot of the houses adjacent to us. And then, you know, traditionally, we have a kind of heavier base and then things get lighter as we go up. And that's what we're trying to do here. But we are trying to pop with a little bit of a playful color, in this case, a kind of orange, which I think blends the the lower and upper parts. You know, so we are trying to be playful with color in a way without being like, you know, too over the top. For sure.
I I actually, yeah, I think the use of the reds, the orange, the creams, I I think like it is a pretty nice play and and I agree the visual of of the the first floor to kind of compliment the the place next to it is nice. It doesn't look like you just without any thought placed a rectangle building in the middle of this lot.
Thank you.
So sorry for, you know, interrupting your your presentation.
Chairman Jacobs, I usually make the mistake of asking the board if it has any questions after each and this is the first time I did. Then you jumped in and said, I have a question.
I know, I didn't, I didn't want to, I just didn't want to forget this. So thank you.
Okay, all right. My next witness is Lee Klein.
Evening.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And if you can state and spell your name for the record.
My name is Lee, middle initial D as in Daniel, Klein, K L E I N.
Thank you.
Professional, I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is current. I'm also a nationally certified professional traffic operations engineer and my certification is current. I've been before this board several times in the past several months.
Mr. Chairman, please accept him as an expert in engineering.
Yes, yes.
All right, so Lee, I think, Lee, you understand the issue. It's not so much in and out traffic, but the configuration of the parking garage itself.
Yes, yes.
You prepared a report, but please focus on it.
Sure, yeah, I mean, Richard pretty much explained how people are going to come in and out, but I'll just go over it one more time. So people that are assigned to parking spaces number five and six, the two on the right side, when you enter the driveway, they'll be able to parallel park. It'll be on their right side. However, somebody that's assigned to parking spaces one, two, three and four, the parallel spaces on the other side, they'll have to come in first, make a K turn in the back and then parallel park. So their driver's side door will be opening to the aisle. The people in the back, the three perpendicular parking spaces, those people will be able to drive in, turn into that spot. When they're ready to leave, they back out and go ahead first out. What what will happen with the two parallel spaces in in five and six? They'll have to pull forward, make a K turn in the back and then exit the facility. The the width of the drive aisle is twelve feet, ten inches between the cars. That's typical of a travel lane on a street that has parking on both sides. Typically, that would be a one way street. However, in this situation, the traffic volumes are very low. The number of cars coming in and out is very low. And excuse me, the visit, I think I got what Bridget has. And the as the vehicles enter, they'll be able to see a vehicle trying to leave and vice versa. So if a vehicle is trying to exit while another vehicle is trying to enter, and that's very rare, I think, in this situation. The vehicle that's trying to exit can back up behind the three perpendicular parking spaces. Wait for the other vehicle to pull into that paver area, then they can leave. And then the vehicle that was entering can either parallel park back in their space, make a K turn and parallel park or make the maneuver into spaces seven, eight and nine. So I think the way we've designed it, again, because it's low volume, the depth of the drive aisle is very shallow, I'll say, from the street to the parking spaces. And the volume is going to be very low, that I think it's it's very compatible to to have a narrow drive aisle as opposed to a twenty four foot wide or twenty two foot wide two way drive aisle. That's it, yeah, other than, and actually, I mean, the number of of parking of trips are 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 three or four trips, two in, one out, three in, depending on which peak hour it is. So we're really talking about very low volumes within an hour. So every five to ten to twenty minutes, a vehicle could be entering or exiting.
Just a question, the houses around there, are there parking driveways or is the parking on the street? What's the, what was your impression?
I I think it's a mix of both. I think there are some driveways and there there are some people that have to park on the street. So we've got a mix here. Right now, we, there is no curb cut for this particular property, but we'll be introducing a curb cut. But we'll also be pulling the parked cars into the site.
Thank you. No other comments, Lee?
I think the only other thing is we're we're going to be proposing electric vehicle charging stations within the parking lot, with the parking garage inside. So we'll have two of those. And I think they'll probably be parking spaces five and six, but I think we're flexible, but it's five and six are against the building, so it's easy to get the infrastructure in there for the chargers.
Okay, all right, thank you. Final witness, Catherine Gregory. Hi, Catherine.
I can't see her because of the
The graphic?
Screen, yeah, there you go. You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And just state and spell your name for the record.
Catherine Gregory, K A T H R Y N is my first name and Gregory is G R E G O R Y.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Let me say my business address is ninety six Lindwood Plaza, number three fifty.
And and we accept qualifications, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so Catherine, there's two variances that are being requested. And there's also some in the garage itself. We learned there was some of the the standards aren't met in 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 the garage as far as square footage. So those are the three items I think you have to discuss.
Yes. So first and foremost, we're here seeking a use variance for the multifamily use because it's not permitted in the R one, one and two family zone. So with that, we need to meet both the positive and the negative criteria. The positive criteria is where the use variance promotes special reasons, which are promotion of the purposes of the municipal land use law. And we have to find that the site is particularly suited to the use. We also have to prove the negative criteria where there's no substantial detriment to public good and no substantial impairment to intent and purpose of the zone for any So I feel that the site is particularly well suited to the multifamily use. First and foremost, what was discussed by our architects is that the lot is truly oversized for the zone. It's two point two times the minimum lot area requirement. I think that it would probably be difficult to subdivide it just out on the opportunity seeking variances. And in addition, there are actually a number of multifamily uses that are located in vicinity of this building, which would include two thirty nine Danforth with twenty units, two forty three Danforth with twenty units, two thirty nine Old Bergen Road with six units and two forty one Old Bergen Road with twelve units. I believe it's a more efficient use of land at this location. The architect also discussed the fact that we're going to have a one to one parking ratio. I think that goes to the suitability of the site. And then going forward, we also need a bulk variance, C variance for the side yard. And that's where five foot one inches is required and four feet is being proposed. And again, that's on the side where there is a existing house that's on the lot line. So we are providing that as our architect says, that's pure constraint. And we feel like maybe the intent of the ordinance because of the easement that's on the other side of our property that truly acts like a side yard because it can't be developed. So I think you need, you know, the intent on the ordinance. And in terms of the interior parking, we have a twelve foot, ten inch drive aisle. And in your ordinance, actually eighteen feet is required for two way traffic. But it is a low volume use. We only have nine cars and our traffic engineer made testimony to the to the movements that will be within the parking lot itself. And we also need a variance for compact spaces. But I think that the benefits out for the occupants because that does allow us to have a one to one ratio for parking. So in terms of the positive criteria, I believe that we promote three of the purposes of municipal land use law. The first would be purpose A, which talks about promoting the public health safety laws in our local The reason I say that is, if you've heard me test card before, there is a certain case, the Annex and Works City case that states that promotion of a state policy is equivalent to promotion of the public wealth. And so in the state plan, Jersey City is in planning area one. And that's where development and redevelopment is supposed to happen within areas of existing neighborhood. So that's what we're doing here. We're redeveloping this property in an area that has existing water, sewer, streets, etc. I also believe that we're in a desirable visual environment. I think that the architect has done a great job really reacting to what is actually on the street. If we, when we take a look at the building, it almost looks like it, it might be two properties side by side for connection. Just in the way that the architecture has been created. Just as well, we're also keeping within the height requirements. So we are similar to most of the other properties on the block, unlike some of the other multifamily buildings, which are actually four or five stories in height. And I also believe that we promote purpose M, which talks about to the more efficient use of land. And that's the environment for multifamily structure on the service class lot, to the more efficient use of the land. In terms of the negative criteria, I don't believe there's any substantial detriment to the public good by allowing all of these variances. There are very similar setbacks that are located throughout Danforth and throughout the neighborhood. So I don't think that we're going to get seen there. And as I stated earlier, there are already are multifamily buildings. One moment, I'm sorry. Sorry, so, oh, gosh. I I apologize. I I was actually, I was on an HOA meeting and I was on my headphones and I guess my headphones died. So then it started coming out of my iPad. I apologize about that. So where was I? Okay, I was talking about the the substantial damage to the public good. As I stated before, there are a number of multifamily buildings that are located in this neighborhood and on the street. So therefore, the the public's already accustomed to having some multifamily in the neighborhood. And then the last point of negative criteria is no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone or in zone ordinance. The first thing that we need to do is under the Medici case, we have to reconcile the emission we use in the zone. I think that what I would say is that multifamily is actually contemplated in the zone and that's what we've seen in housing. So it is constantly contemplated, just a little bit of a different structure. And then also, I believe that we promote two of the land use objectives of the master plan, which would include some continued efforts to enhance residents' neighborhoods. I think that's what we do in here. And ensure that the city's available housing is balanced and meet the needs of all city residents. And we are participating, where we are providing a variety of different sized units to help meet those needs. So in sum, I think that we do need both positive and negative criteria for implementing both D one use variance for multifamily use. Also, we both parents departments, including the side yard setback, compact space and also the drive aisle. And I'm looking to any companies.
Thank you very much. That that concludes our presentation. So we've presented three witnesses. I turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman. If the board has any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone from the board have any questions at this point? Okay. Catherine?
Well, I I was just going along with what you had said before, Josh, that we had already discussed another building and we said it didn't fit into the neighborhood the way it looked. And I love this project and I like the what the design is. But again, that exterior, the facade is just not fitting in with what the neighborhood looks like. That's that's my comment.
So should, do you want to make a question out of that to Richard or?
Yeah, I I guess that, like I said also, that we had a month back or whenever the one of the last meetings were that people had alternate designs that they they showed us that we then went with something else, but they had different designs in place in case we had a question about the design that they were proposing.
Yeah, I mean, if I may, and I I can, Ms. Commissioner, I can, I can absolutely sort of understand that that response. I mean, I I I would say that, you know, I mean, this is not a historic district or anything like that, but, you know, Secretary of the Interior Standards, which guides a lot of
Secretary of the Interior Standards, which guides a lot of thinking for new construction in areas that have older structures in them is not to is not to repeat them. And you know, I I mean, the the example that I give so often is, you know, car design, right? I mean, you know, in twenty twenty-two, would you really be driving a car that was was, I mean, unless you were some kind of like old school aficionado, I guess, driving a car from like the fifties or something like that? Doesn't make any sense, you know, in terms of the modern way that we live and use things. And we frankly just don't build buildings that 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 look like this anymore. And it's not only an aesthetic response that I'm making, it's it's also building performance. The the materials that we're proposing are inherently more sustainable. This building is going to save a lot more energy in terms of how it operates. And, you know, we don't have the kind of crafts basis that go, and and this isn't really necessarily a crafty street or something, but just in 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 speaking to what I'm guessing are some of the the articulations that you find quaint. You know, it's very hard to find people that even do that kind of thing anymore. So I I tend to be someone that does not like to try to replicate for the sake of replication something that I think exists as something we can enjoy as a historical thing, but isn't necessarily consistent with, you know, the goals of how we live today.
I still think it just looks very, it stands out like a sore thumb in the neighborhood. And I'm not saying it's not a beautiful building, but where it is.
I I had a question, sorry, Catherine, you have another question?
I'm done, don't, I'm done.
Okay. I I guess I understand but probably disagree with the the council members directive. In in terms of, it looked like getting we went through a lot of hurdles to try to get one-to-one parking. It doesn't look like the space accommodates nine parking spaces perfectly. I don't, I don't know what your thoughts are, and and I probably would feel more comfortable thinking this is probably just a more manageable parking situation if we had maybe seven parking spots and didn't have to do, you know, a dozen internal K turns to maneuver around that parking garage.
Yeah. I mean, I I can also understand that as well. Mr. Chairman, you know, I I think that in discussing this with both the council person and then with the planning director, I think that there was, you know, I I think that we, our team, after careful consideration, thought that we could accommodate more or less, more or less completely this request of of one-to-one, and I I think that, you know, I I eagerly anticipate the master plan adoption fully, right? Because I think that that is a real, it's going to be a far more contemporary basis for how cars exist in this place. In this place meaning the whole city. But but I do think that, you know, the discussion of this project started almost two and a half years ago at this point, believe it or not, and so I do think that, you know, there's there, we're trying to make every attempt possible to acknowledge and and come up with a solution that is consistent with what was asked of us from the from the council, from the board representative.
Anyone have any questions else before we go to the public? Okay, Francisco?
This time, hands raised.
Okay, then let's close the public portion. Any staff comments? And I, Francisco, I know that this was a handover project.
I mean, I can read Lindsay's comments if. I can share my screen. Okay, so. I think the majority of this we already heard, but I'll briefly go over it. The applicant is proposing an inherently beneficial use. Therefore, the applicant is required to provide proof that the proposed use can meet the purpose of the zoning. The applicant is proposing a multifamily building, which is not a permitted use in R one. One thing that I do want to mention is. So the proposed, the proposed application is also providing below grade detention, a below grade detention system. And that's mainly one of the things that I wanted to focus on, that I didn't really hear too much attention. Yeah, so I'll stop sharing. Staff has no other further comments, just staff recommends approval. And that's it.
So so your your recommendation of approval, it mostly hinges upon the stormwater detention system?
No, I wanted to focus on that because I I didn't hear too much about the detention system.
Okay.
So I just wanted to add that into the rest of the other comments.
And 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 what what are the other positive criteria that that you see?
Um, it's so. Seems that. Just briefly reading. Let me just share it one more time. So it seems that, in the opinion of the staff, this proposal advances the following purposes of zoning, so to secure safety from fire, flood, panic, and other natural man-made disasters. In addition to because of the oversized site, the proposed density for this project is seventy-one units an acre, whereas for a conforming R one lot of twenty-five hundred square feet, it would be thirty-five units an acre.
Okay.
So that's a good thing? Just a little confused.
So there's, so there's a detention center or or system. I I still don't think that like that looks like trying to fit that parking in there, it doesn't make sense. I think if this project wants to have one-to-one parking, great. Have bigger unit size, and you can easily have one-to-one parking. But you can't with nine, ninety of them, is my, it's just my view, it from looking at, looking at the the dimensions of this. And I like the rendering, so I think you could very easily have have a nice apartment mix. You don't need to have a four hundred and fifty square foot studio apartment. You you can have seven units and seven parking spaces.
Your chairman, I'm I'm listening to the comments and and I, I think it comes down to two things. I mean, we could, we can have the architect describe the detention system if that was overlooked, but it it's on the plans, I I believe, and and I think it meets the the standard required. But I've heard two comments, facade, a concern about facade and a concern about the parking being one-to-one based on the size of the garage. So those are the two comments that I I heard as far as the concerns of the board. Was there anything else?
I don't know what anyone else from the board thinks who hasn't voiced something. I mean, the only thing that really gives me a concern only because it looked to me like if I lived there, it would be such a pain, was the was trying to squeeze all those spots in there. And and I, I don't know what to think of this, and I and I guess, because this is the second thing we've seen tonight, talking about making use of of space for electric vehicles. So I'm I'm sure I'm missing something. Is it, does the site get some type of benefit by having a dedicated space for electric cars?
Can I add to that? So very recently, state legislation has gone through where if you're providing an electric purging station, your parking minimum is reduced by ten percent. A little tricky here because as we know, when we're looking at use variances, we're not really looking at the same parking requirements as we would if it was a permitted use. If this was a permitted use, we'd be looking at a one-to-one parking ratio. When we're looking at, you know, more mixed unit building, multi-unit buildings, we have standardly been doing parking standards by bedroom count. Recently, we do point three spaces per bedroom, which is probably thirty percent, but it's not unreasonable when you're looking at a use variance to try to come as close to possible what would have been the requirement, which is one-to-one. So I can do math real quick, I don't know what the ten percent reduction is, but I assume it's at least one or two spaces. I'm sorry, it's ten forty-five, I just have to pull my calculator. Um, times nine.
Yeah, yeah. One point eight spaces, so almost two spaces.
Right.
So.
That, in it, in essence, if we were looking at a a you, like a a project that had a one-to-one requirement, the electric spaces would take that requirement down to the seven.
Yeah, that's great. I, and 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 believe it or not, like, I actually do see that as a positive, in the positive criteria column. So I'm giving them stormwater and and I'll give them credit for for the EV spots. I I drive the NEV, so I embrace this and people aren't going to make the the switch. But I also have, I I enjoy Mr. Garber's work, but I'm, and I understand that you kind of have to have the big block design so you can jam more more stuff in, but it it really, I I'm I'm hoping that I don't know, I I hope it looks better than the rendering indicate. I don't know.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm I'm listening to all of this, I know that it's late, but I'm I'm looking at experts that were brought in to talk to these things as far as measuring space and measuring the ability to have this many parking spaces. I, it may be a feeling that it wouldn't fit, but I think if we understand, I guess, the technical part of it from the engineering, that they're saying it works. So we may have another feeling about it, but it seems like if it works, we should, I would be in favor of supporting it. So should we come to a vote?
Sure.
Okay, I would make a motion that we.
I don't, did we do public comment? Did I totally miss?
We didn't do public comment?
Yes, we did, there was.
You did, there was no public.
Okay.
Also, Mr. Chairman, I would like to say a few words before, I I did not summarize.
Sure.
I I'm listening to these comments and candidly, you know, I think I'm hearing it's most, most of your comments are favorable, but I, we do need five votes, and I don't want to run the risk of being turned down because of a parking spot or because you think the facade itself needs some some change. So I I I do think there were so many citizens that participated in these hearings tonight, except except ours. So I do, I do think that speaks well of the neighborhood in the sense that people are not here, and you know, and I know it's it's hard to get people to show up to support something, not so hard to get people to show up when they're against something. So I think the neighborhood through its silence is saying, we're okay with this. The council person obviously seems to be in favor. And so again, though, we've got seven members, we have, we need five, and I I hate to lose a vote or two because of a change in the facade that we might be able to make if that's necessary, or a loss of a parking spot if if the board feels that that's a better layout.
I don't know the parking specs, I, you know, that, I I know exactly what you guys said, it looked tight to me and 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 I, Kim is right, I mean, I'm not, I'm no expert, and and Mr. Klein is an expert. So if you tell me, yeah.
Can I just ask you, when you say tight, which, what direction and what's tight?
The idea that that you need to do this like internal K turn to be able to fit into these spots, I mean, to me, that seems kind of ridiculous.
Well, it's not to fit into them, it's to be able to parallel park so your driver door opens the right way. And to be able to come out headfirst, so either way, somebody's going to have to make a K turn, whether they parallel park on their inbound move, and then when they're ready to leave, they have to make a K turn to be able to go out headfirst. Or come in headfirst, make a K turn, then parallel park on the other side so their door opens.
What happens if there's a, can there be a car coming and a car coming out at the same?
Yes, that's what I was saying in my testimony, that it, because it's not that deep of a garage, if somebody's coming in and I'm trying to get out, I can back up into that paver area, wait for that person to come back there, then we can pass each other, I can leave, they can finish their K turn or turn into their parking space, and then we're all good. And it's a very low turnover of spaces. Some people may just leave their car here and use it on the weekend. Some people might not even have a car, maybe we don't fill them all. But I I think it works. I I don't see an issue with the width of the drive aisle, the parallel parking maneuvers, and the K turns, I I think it works.
Okay, look, I don't want to, I don't want to hold up your application on say, I'm coming from, going to, from nine parking spots to eight parking spots. If if you guys, if if you think that this makes sense and is defensible, which obviously you do, you know, that's, that's really the only issue I had. I mean, I I can, I can support this as is, I I just had those questions, and I also, you know, understand that the city's direction, and I know that this is a half mile from a light rail stop. But I hear what I hear what people are saying, I think we just got to push people there, and and you guys need to stand your ground more and say, we don't need park, all this parking in all of these buildings. But I I I see, I see you heard the community here.
Okay, so I'll say it, why doesn't somebody then make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve Case Z twenty-one oh seventy-two at two oh three Danforth Avenue with the preliminary and final site plans and C and D variances. With conditions.
I'll second.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadine?
Yes.
Commissioner Silva?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Oh.
Commissioner Donnelly?
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Yes.
Six in favor, one in no.
Well, thank you, board, and thank you for staying so late.
Thank you. All right, good, good luck.
Good luck.
Good night all.
Good night.
I just needed to. Here.
What what did you say?
I just need a few, I'm crippled up.
Okay.
We have three things left. Resolution. Reorganization.
You're off the record, Ben.
I know that, and and I'm just informing everybody what we have left, and then the executive session, so.
Exactly.
I'll speed read the resolutions while we're ready.
That doesn't help.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That makes it worse.
Okay.
Thanks.
Re- reorganization. Do people want to run for these positions? I'm commotion.
You're off the record.
Well, not yet on the record. This is, this is off the.
This is, this is off the record. I would like to pick a motion off the record.
Off the record, I did speak with. Was not interested.
Yes, keep it as, oh, no, no, no. I think it's for the vice chairman. So that I will, I will actually ask Kate to be the vice chairman.
I, I, I really, I really think that we need a little new blood in the, the vice position.
Maybe, maybe next year. The people are a little bit new and I have no interest. So by next year.
How about you, Kim? I don't know. Or Ca- Kathy or Kim?
Are you interested?
Okay, I just needed to get out a kink here.
What, what, what are we, what are we doing now?
Just letting you know when we're going back on the record, Vinnie or Josh.
Yes, they, Kim, the, 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 the ball was thrown at you to see if you would be interested in being the vice chair. I believe. Did I, did I say that correctly?
I, you know, I, I kind of agree with. Ahmed about. Hey. She says, no, I would do my civic duty and say yes, but I think she would probably feel him better. And also. A bet would probably be great as well.
All right, Kate said ping pong. Now it's back to you.
Look, I mean, I hear what Kate's saying and I don't dislike, I. Kate has been on the board for a very long time and if we don't.
I was appointed by Healy folks.
Yeah, if you don't give other people an opportunity. I, I mean, at some point you're going to be like, well, I, I mean, other. Me, Kate and Ahmed, how long have we been on, you know, we've been on the board much longer than, than anybody else.
Doing a great job, Jack.
I, what are Commissioner Coyle, was something you'd be interested in?
Catherine?
Do I have to answer right now?
The commitment is the same. That stuff makes you feel any better.
There's no difference.
The time commitment is the exact same.
Yeah.
But with the time commitment, I know, I know. It's just that I, I'm, I'm just watching it and I feel like I'm new at this.
How about the book report she has to write?
The book. Go back on the record and maybe do the resolutions and, and then you can.
Okay.
Back on the record. All right.
Okay, the, the next resolution to memorialize was, the application was heard on March 10th. The applicant was GN Management, Inc. That was case number Z21 dash 013. That was an application for C variances. Present on March 10th was Chairman Jacobs, Commissioners Shadid, Green, Brown, Oil, Patel and Maney. That passed seven in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the next three applications were heard on February 24th. Present on February 24th with Chairman Jacobs, Commissioners Donnelly, Shadid, Green, Arroyo, Maney and Patel. The first case was 181 Princeton Avenue LLC. It was case Z20 dash 051. That was an application for a DNC variance. That passed five in favor, two opposed. The two opposed being Chairman Jacobs and Commissioner Donnelly. All in favor of memorializing that is aye. So the next one was. Indirjant Singh, S-I-N-G-H. That was case Z21 dash 060. The address of that was 373 New York Avenue. That was again for a DNC variance and again. That was passed five in favor, two opposed. The two opposed were Chairman Jacobs and Donnelly. And all in favor of memorializing that.
Aye.
And the next application, February 24th, same seven commissioners. This one passed seven in favor and none opposed. That was in the matter of Man Property Group, Z21 dash 084. Preliminary in major site plan approval with a use variance and a height variance. And as I said, that passed seven in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that is.
Aye.
Aye. And the next one was heard, next case is April 7th. Present on April 7th was Chairman Jacobs, Brown, Patel, Green and Oil. That was case Z21 dash 088. It is in the matter of the application of 260 Palisade Avenue LLC. That was case Z21 dash 088. That passed five in favor and none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that. And the next two. Were heard on. May 12th. May 12th. Present were Chairman Jacobs, Commissioners Shadid, Brown, Patel, Green and Coyle. The first. Application. Resolution to memorialize was the 377 Ogden Avenue JCLC. Case Z21 dash 073. That was an administrative amendment to C and D variances for property at 90 Webster Avenue. That passed six in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that is aye. And the same six commissioners, a case that was again heard on May 12th. Was Z21 dash 085. Valorev Construction LLC. The address of that was 166 Hancock Avenue. It was an application for a preliminary and final major site plan approval with variances. That passed six in favor and none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that.
Aye.
Aye.
And the next three. Were heard on May 26th. Present on May 26th with Chairman Jacobs, Commissioners Donnelly, Green, Cruz, Patel, Arroyo and Coyle. And. Well, these three that I'm about to read, they all passed seven in favor and none opposed. The first was Z21 dash 019 in the matter of the application of JSQ Group LLC. 211 Summit Avenue. And I say it was case Z21 dash 019. Again, that passed all in favor, all in favor, all in favor of memorializing that.
Aye.
And next is Z21 dash 075, a minor site plan with DNC variances. The, it's in the matter of the application of Tingly Kang and Sung Zhang. For 99 Thorn Street, that passed seven in favor and none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that.
Aye.
And the next one, the last one for May 26th. Z21 dash 050, 218 Webster JCLC. Minor site plan approval with C and D variances for property at 271 Webster Avenue. Again, as I said, that passed seven in favor, none opposed. All in favor of the bat?
Aye.
And the last two were heard on June 23rd. They both passed six in favor, none opposed. Present that evening was Acting Chair Donnelly, Commissioner Shadid, Arroyo, Patel, Green and Coyle. The first case is Z22 dash 019 in the matter of 221 Liberty Avenue. That was an application for minor site plan approval, use variance and bulk variance. Again, that passed six in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that.
Aye.
And the last one is 2 Hoboken Avenue. Z22 dash 008. That was an administrative amendment to C and D variances. Again, that passed six in favor and none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that.
All right.
Aye.
That ends the resolutions and so now do we go back to reorganization?
Or what's the, what's the other thing?
That we have to go into executive session for five minutes to just discuss one, one thing of litigation. So reorganization.
Sure. First meeting, you want to? Vice president?
Bianca, want to be the chairman?
Sorry, yeah.
Okay.
The only thing is I, I'd have to be guided for a while. I mean, I really don't know everything that you guys know, especially Kate and Josh and. You know, so I mean, I'd have to be guided a little bit when it comes to handling that meeting, so.
There's nothing to know.
Nothing to know. One speaker, everybody, one speaker.
By being a resident of, of Jersey City and being an appointed official. You are more than qualified and anyone is more than qualified to be the, the chair, the vice chair, the secretary of the board.
Okay, I'll, I'll try it. I'll try it. Okay. I might regret, no, I'll, I'll try it. I'll try it.
It just means that, yeah, sorry.
And, and Vinnie, Vinnie will always be there to, you know, if, if you miss something, he'll gently remind you. And likewise, the, the other board members will if something gets, gets missed. But, 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 but really you're just kind of walking through the agenda and qualifying the, the witnesses and making sure that they go through their paces. And Bridget will remind you of that as well. So.
Next meeting, I'll take notes as you're handling this, so I'll know what I have to say.
Sure, I mean, it's just following along with what we're doing. I mean, you, you all probably don't appreciate how great, I mean, we have a really good support in Vinnie and Bridget. That, that there's not a lot of heavy lifting that, that the board needs to do. It's just listening and, and moving things forward.
Okay. Okay.
So we have decided to, have we decided to keep Josh as the chairman and Catherine as the vice chair? Is that what we're doing?
I'll only do it with Josh or, you know, somebody as a chairperson. I mean, Kate was good. I don't, I've never been with Kim doing the chairing of it, but. Yes, I say yes.
Ahmed could do it, but he has too full of a plate. I, I'm happy to, I'm happy to stay on. And it, most importantly, Francisco needs to be promoted. To full secretary.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's the three. So we don't have any more debate on it. The chairman, Catherine is the vice chair and Francisco is the secretary.
Secretary.
We all agree?
Agree?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
All in favor, say aye. Okay, now we can go into executive session for one quick minute.
Let me.
Yes.
Close the.
Public. Yeah.
You want to make the motion in the public portion though?
Yes.
Go into executive session?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to close the public portion and to move into executive session.
Second.